Welcome to our winter school board work session. I thank everyone for their last minute accommodations. Thank you very much. It was all situated. So, thank you. And I'm hoping the one silver lining, I feel bad that we weren't at five o'clock so we could see all the remodeling, but the silver lining we'll look at is hopefully we might be able to have a work to sort of dinner. We'll see. But thank you, everyone, for being here. And we will get right started because we know we have lots of good information to digest here. So, we will get started with the district strategic measures and I'll hand it over to Debbie. Ready?
It looks like we're trying to get it on the other screen.
Oh, I ask and I will receive. I tell ya.
You might need your class.
See an eye test.
Yeah, I know. Ken doesn't want to sit near me. Hey, Donna.
Hi, Donna.
Yeah, there's.
I'm sorry for the moment.
I like the city beer there.
Now, we rock our. It's like, isn't that like this kind of.
Just lean.
Thank you. Hold on. Can we get the word down?
Take her.
I love technology. What I love is this clock used to this. Can we get this still ready? Yeah, ready.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get started. And good afternoon, superintendent of boarding and school board. We are, our T and O team is thrilled to be with you this afternoon. We have a lot to share and so we're hoping that you can kind of sit back, relax, and just watch. The hope is, I put the slide deck, slides in front of you so you can follow along as we go through them. And what I'm hoping is that all of your questions, all of your aha's that come about from this presentation, you'll be able to take notes, write them down, and after we're finished, we will answer all of your questions. So, we're hoping that we will present for about thirty minutes or forty minutes and we've all practiced that, but we have a feeling it might go longer, right? But we're hoping to get through it quickly. After that, we'll have about forty-five minutes for all of your questions and thoughts. All of this will be, most of which will be presenting and will all be up here for questions and answers. And you have your report that we gave to you a week or so ago and you have the slide deck in front of you. We will be going through both of these, but I just want to start by saying thank you. This is a time that we are going to talk about our district goal, we're going to talk about our strategic measures, we're going to talk about successes and challenges and making sure that we have an action plan going forward. We put a lot of thought and time into the report that you've seen and we want to show you today some different highlights, things that we're doing in T and O and we also want to show you some different data besides what you have gotten in the past. So, we're hoping that will be helpful. When we were talking today, teaching and learning coming up in front of you is similar to how our schools come up to you during a school board meeting and present. And they have, they can get pretty nervous, right? When they come in front of you, just like we are today, but it's also because they have a lot to share with you and they have a lot of strengths that they want to tell you about, they want to tell you how great your schools are doing, and they want to be really, really honest with you about their data that they're sharing with you. And it's similar to that is what we're going to do with you today. We are, we have a lot of great things to talk to you about. We have a lot of highlights, teaching and learning that's been working on, but we also have a lot of data that sometimes is really hard to talk about and I want you to know that this team here has a real sense of urgency to make sure that we're sharing the current data we do and that we're showing you what we want to do in order to improve it. One of the pieces that, as you know, our district goal is something that we strive for along with our pillars of excellence, collaboration, equity, and innovation. Thank you. But with that, it's really important that you know that this team is devoted and want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure that the Beaverton School District is doing whatever we can for our students. We're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves, starting over with Tashiko and kind of go all the way.
Tashiko Mizio, administrator for multi-level programs.
Teflon, student executive administrator for elementary schools.
John Frank, superintendent of elementary school.
Don Pipelitz, team curriculum instruction, future ready and CTE.
Danielle Hudson, executive administrator for student services.
John Bridges, administrator for accounting.
Jenny Anderson.
Kayla, administrator for early learning and one of the team members for curriculum instruction assessment.
Brian Teague, I'm the other curriculum instruction assessment, top administrator focused on secondary schools and I also serve as the Abbott district director.
Patrick Meggs, I'm the executive administrator for elementary schools.
Ken Struckmeyer, middle school exec.
And Miss Nicole Will today, executive administrator for elementary. She is on campus and she can do this today. We are going to show data today to talk about that sense of urgency. And these administrators here that you see in front of you, and I know that I say every time I come up here, but I really can't stress it enough, you have the top of the line when it comes to administrators in our central office in T and O. This team works regularly together, weekly, and in small groups all during the week. And I have never met or been a part of such an extraordinary group of administrators. I consider myself privileged and lucky to work on this team and in the bottom you'll see a team is not a group of people that work together, a team is a group of people that trust each other. And I think that when we talk today about trust and relationships, it's at the core of what we do in our schools every day. And if we don't have that trust and relationships in every one of our schools in Beaverton, then we won't be able to make any academic gains. And we're here to kind of share some of that. Future learning is a lot bigger than just our academic performance. Teaching and learning is about social emotional learning, it's about our career tech programs, it's about early learning. There's so much involved with what we do and what we do is that emotional, social emotional learning for our schools and that results in strong student achievement. So, in the last few years, you know that we have expanded our ELA adoption. For the last five years, we've been doing current adoption in math, we proceeded with health, we also, on top of that, went future ready for one-on-one technology. We've implemented culturally relevant teaching and we had early release last year for collaboration. On top of that, all of these years, when Dawn came into teaching and learning, also we added an early learning component along with social emotional and CTE. So, with that, our teachers have experienced a kind of change over the last few years. As you know, behavior and mental illness has been at an all-time high and we have been, I don't mean anything, but trying to manage that within the school district and the department on top of everything we do for kids with our. Teaching and learning has a theory of action and this theory of action is rooted in what we need to do for our schools and our community. If teaching and learning enhances instructional leadership, provides clarity and gives meaningful feedback, then all school leaders will be able to serve as instructional leaders so that all teachers will be able to provide high-quality instruction, which will result in empowering all students to achieve post-high school success. This theory of action was developed with our team here and also brought down, you'll see today, in a lot of different areas in our schools. We believe that leadership is really at the core of what we're talking about today. It's about strong leaders at the district level, it's about strong leaders in our schools, it's about our teachers being excellent teacher leaders and leading our schools. In teaching and learning, we do two things. One is that we have administrative professional development for all of our 180 administrators. We also have teacher professional development for all of our teachers in our district as well. I am putting in this, we kind of put this slide in quite honestly at the last minute and I'll tell you why. Equity this year is served in our Office of the Superintendent. Pat McCurry is our administrator for equity and he is in, has left the teaching and learning department and been served under the superintendent. So, we don't have him up here with us, but he is in with Spirit. We do a lot of collaboration with Pat at all levels in teaching and learning. Up here is a list, I won't go through each one of them, but there are things that he is currently working on now with us and with others around the district and will continue to do. I talked to Dawn a little bit today about having him do a report out, maybe in April, to the board so that you can see the Office of Equity and Inclusion and what they're working on. I can't stress enough how important his work is with our work. We're consistently, everything we do in teaching and learning is embedded in the equity pillar and so we, it's not isolated and needs to be a part of our entire district. Here you will see a few of our investments that we have made over the years and all of them we will be talking today and with great admiration for what we're doing and what we're achieving. So, you're going to see a lot of teaching and learning highlights from these investments. And in doing that, I'm going to start, many of us are going to be talking up here today, but what I want to stress before we start is number one, how committed we are to this work, how we don't take it lightly. Any of the test scores that we are seeing today mean a tremendous amount for us as individuals personally and collectively and we do have a sense of urgency. I put this quote up here is because if we want meaningful change, we have to make a connection to the heart before we can make a connection to the mind. We cannot forget that the social emotional being of our kids and our schools are not at the height of what we do and how important it is. With that, it takes strong leaders. As we look ahead into the next century, leaders will be those who empower others and if your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, or become more, you are a leader. Our executive administrators have begun the work in the last few years of really working with our principals and making sure they are strong instructional leaders, which leads me to Patrick. Yep. Going to start.
Right, good afternoon. So, we just wanted to start to highlight the fact that we've done something new this year with all fifty-four schools and all schools were asked to create a school learning plan that became and is the foundation of the work they're doing with their staff in their buildings over the course of the year. Each school was asked to identify areas of focus, goals, and strategies in the areas of equity, academic excellence, and within collaboration. Principals were asked to determine areas of focus and then goals with each of those targeted areas based on a wide range of data sets between their state data as well as in-building data that they use and have worked with their staff on. They then developed strategies to meet those goals and then these plans are meant to be living documents that schools are adding to over the course of the year as they add to the strategy they see and to be responsive and flexible to what they're seeing in their building. But at the end of the day, it's really about focusing on student learning and student growth. And these plans were developed with staff input over the course of the fall and because they were new this year, it was more principal-driven than it will be in the future. As they worked over the course of the year, their leadership teams in each school have been reflecting back on the school learning plan and they'll be far richer going into the second year because there'll be far more staff input into those. Each principal then came to an academic conference. We held a meeting with all fifty-four principals. We had about four or five principals in the room at one time. They shared their goals, their strategies, and then engaged in conversations with the five execs, with Ginny and with Dawn, and with each other to support each other's work, to talk about their leadership moves, and then talk about what their next steps are based on their data, their story of their school, and the work they're going to do with their staff. What we have found over the course of that time is it's led to some increased accountability because there's that accountability to their peers, listening to each other, and it was amazing to hear peers say to each other, "Oh, I didn't know you were doing that. Tell me more about that." And that partnership, that efficacy went up. There was also more accountability for them, for their plans back to teaching and learning as well as from teaching and learning back to schools. How do we support you in helping your plans come to fruition? And you will notice with the few principals who've come this year already to present to the board, they are timed their board presentations to their school learning plans and that's something we hope to have them do more going into the future. So, that has been a really powerful part of the year and principals have appreciated the ability to come forward and share that in such an open way, but it's also added some coherency to the system that we didn't have before. In the teaching and learning department, we have these four areas that we have started with, we began working in these areas last year and we're only enhancing it this year and they have really brought a lot of focus and clarity to our department. Equity and leadership has really been the umbrella for our work. It's about building strong, independent learners, meeting the needs of children across the school day, and the leadership moves that are needed in order to support teachers in their work of supporting the need of each child and their care. And then underneath that is that consistent curriculum and instruction implementation on classrooms. That's about building coherency pre-K through 12th grade. It's about high leverage, meaningful feedback to teachers and to students, and it's also about how do we help build that social emotional learning aspect into every kid's life and every school across the day. These really do guide the work of principals, of TOSSes, and of teachers and it's really about principals knowing deeply the curriculum, the instructional practices, and the assessment data they use that they're leading and it's about teachers knowing deeply that curriculum and instructional practice and assessment data that they use to guide their teaching. It's work about fostering and supporting strong instructional leaders in ways frankly that we haven't really done before. It has been a big push and focus over the last year and a half. Key to making this all happening is deepening teacher and principal understanding of the curriculum materials and how to support each child with that cognitively rich curriculum at all levels in really coherent and intentional ways. And we are being more intentional and focused of this at all levels and that has brought a lot of clarity to our apartment and our work. And as Ginny said upfront, it is about the team working together on this, not just about principals or just about TOSSes. That's the work we're all collectively engaged in. But critical to this is really helping principals in the feedback they give teachers and the feedback teachers give to students. An example of this is execs, when we're out in buildings, we're spending time in classrooms, walking classrooms with principals, thinking with them about what are those feedback leadership moves we want to help give back to teachers so that they are pressing student understanding. And so, it's that idea of taking feedback and doing it in real time in principle, in buildings when we're with principals, but also learning about it when we're get-together in our principal meetings. That social emotional learning part has been a really big focus, as you all well know, this year in all of our schools. We are spending time working alongside principals, TOSSes, with teachers around really supporting students and their access and engagement to their learning, supporting students and their regulation and the ways that they're connecting across the school day. But really, it's about building relationships and teachers knowing students well and how to meet their broad range of needs as they come through the door. Principal learning times are really just that, they are times for principals to come and learn together to deepen their understanding of leadership, dissecting and discussing problems of practice, fostering collective efficacy, strengthening the role of the principal as a instructional leader, and developing the strategies to meet the needs of students in each school. And that has really been our focus and these four areas have added some clarity and some intentionality and some coherency to that that has been powerful for principals and we know that is, while we have work to do, it's strengthening that sense of principal agency, it is growing their sense of their ability and their skills around their practice and that efficacy we can really see translating across all levels, especially when we come together as a group. And as a department, we are using that to build our coherency of practice and use of data that is really central that you saw in our school learning plans. And those two things tie quite clearly back to this work. So, pass it to Kayla, we'll talk about early learning.
Thank you. As the newest member of the team, I have the privilege of taking on early learning in the district and I know that as superintendent and a board priority, so I want to share with you a few highlights of our work. So, we are currently serving 250 students. We have seven prepaid classrooms, two additional classrooms who join ESD each year. On the fifth day of the week, our classes run two and a half hours a day, four days a week, but on the fifth day, on Friday, that is our time to really deepen the work and understanding of developmentally appropriate practices for young children and we do a lot of staff outreach with families. So, I think that's really, really important as we're bringing new families into our district and we are making sure to figure out what it is that they need, how do we support them with resources. In that work, we also have our family resource coordinators that are often working alongside our classroom teachers as well. So, once again, it's important that we're connected with our families early on. We are also very, I think we're a real model and we talk about our inclusive nature with our pre-k program and that of those 252 students we're serving currently, 70 of those students are students from our partnership with the Northwest Regional ESD. They are students who are on IFSPs or they are special education students, so we're getting to know them early on and partnering with our partners at the ESD. We're also partnering with the Morrison Center in doing that work. Morrison Center is able to do outreach to families as well. And again, I think when we're bringing in some of our most vulnerable students, this is really the right work and important work. And I also want to highlight that in addition to that, we also have teaching preschool partners, which is a big part of helping us set up our curriculum and our environment and also working with the Children's Institute. But the work in early learning actually doesn't stop in pre-K. Right now, we're really looking at kindergarten and our kindergarten practices as well. And what we're hoping is to do is we have the early learning alignment team which has started and our early learning alignment team is looking at the best practices and what's working well in pre-K and how do we take some of those practices and move them into kindergarten next year. So, we do have high hopes that we can make some adjustments to the kindergarten classroom as early as next year. But, so stay tuned for kindergarten. Ready, use that. I also have the privilege of talking to you a little bit about Teachers College. Teachers College is our partnership with Columbia University. We have been working with Teachers College prior to even 2018 and a lot of our work in the last couple of years has been around our reading lab schools at the elementary school level. The schools are listed there and what's really important about that work is that it's embedded professional development. We have professional developers from Teachers College that are in buildings and are able to provide one-on-one support in classrooms, model lessons, pull out small groups of teachers to work on best practices, and also principals are engaged in that learning as well. That learning is also taking place at the middle school. They're doing their work with Teachers College in the area of Rye. I think the work with Teachers College is important. I think that we will see gains in that work over time as we continue to deepen our understanding about how children learn to read and we continue to focus on the individual child itself and how do we take each child from their current place to their next goal. Now, I'm going to focus on our English language arcs. So, this first slide is a comparison. And one of the things I want to highlight here is that we are in orange, Beaverton is in orange, and that we are outperforming similar-sized districts in all areas in grades three, five, and eight in ELA. Now, I want to show you another piece of data. This is our upcoming graduating class of 2023. So, this slide actually shows you a cohort of students over time. So, when these students entered, a cohort is exactly the same group of kids that we're looking at as fourth graders, fifth, sixth, seventh, or eighth grade scores last year. So, one of the things we noticed, the top line is Beaverton, it's in red, and what you'll notice is that our Beaverton students are outperforming other districts. And you'll notice also that it's our fourth graders, you can see where our fourth graders are and then they go up in fifth grade, down in sixth, up in seventh, and down in eighth. But that trend is the same trend for other districts across the state and it's also the state Oregon trend as well. So, it kind of leads you to pause about why does the data look like that? What happened in each of those years for an entire cohort of students, not just Beaverton students? So, I think that when we look at how test scores may drop, I think it's important to look at that cohort data and maybe as a district, we start asking deeper little questions about what happened during that test? What was something, was something new that was introduced? What caused those things to drop and get spiked back up? So, if you're following that trend line, I'm guessing we should see gains as ninth graders and we'll see if that is the case. So, I want to talk a little bit about our successes and our challenges. So, one of our successes, of course, is our kindergarten students are meeting or exceeding the end of kindergarten as assessed on the ERLA. The ERLA is our assessment tool that we find great value in, it's the primary grade levels especially because it's very diagnostic as to where students are achieving and where they need to invest. While 75% is not 100%, we do have room for growth even though that is a successful area. We also know that our Beaverton third and fifth graders have outperformed state averages by 14 and 16 percentage points. So, again, things are, we're doing something right, we just need to continue to grow that. And at fifth grade, our proficiency rates for our black students have increased over the last five years from 43.5% to 52.4%. While 52.4% is nothing to get excited about, it still is a great area for growth. We're obviously connecting our cultural response of teaching practices. Something in there is starting to work and it's still an area for growth as well. I also want to say a part of that success, I believe, is that we're really looking at our school libraries and making sure that students see a mirror reflected in their literacy. We will continue to increase classroom libraries so that all children find something that they can connect to. Of course, our challenges is that a smaller percentage of kindergarten students are proficient in reading as compared to last year. So, we need to look deeper, dig deep for as to why that would be. And our outcomes are still predictive of socioeconomic status, English language proficiency, proficiency, race, and ability. But we do have an action plan. Part of that action plan, and I don't know that I'll read everything in detail for you, but I do want to highlight two different pieces right now. One is that we're working with a specific grade level cohort of teachers in reading and writing. We're beginning with fourth grade forward in reading this spring. So, we are gathering one teacher from every elementary school in the district to look at reading in general. We'll be evaluating our test scores, our best practices, what's really happening in fourth grade, looking at our units and trying to figure out what are our next instructional, what our instructional practice should look like and maybe what are interventions that we need to implement as well. So, we're trying to be very targeted and specific with our planning. Our plan is to increase that over the years, next year bring up third grade, fifth grade, etc. So, we plan to not just keep it at fourth grade. We're also working with a cohort of teachers too for building right now to look at our writing workshop with a focus on grade level collaboration and looking at vertical alignment. And I'll actually mention one more thing, our MTSS system in synergy. One of the things we know is that we need to really be knowledgeable about where our students are at every point in time. This system is being designed by the MTSS team. Danielle's team is also a part of that work. She and I are collaborating to make sure that we create a system to gather data and help teachers design next steps for students as well.
Kayla, can you use gear? Yeah. For MTSS.
Multi-tiered system of support. So, taking a look at secondary, we have successes and challenges as well. One of our successes is that our eighth graders are continuing to outperform the state average in ELA by 11%. We also know that over the past five years, our proficiency rates for our black students have improved by 5%. Again, we're focusing on cultural response and teaching practices, increasing our libraries at the secondary level as well. We're also, all of our dual-language middle schools have seen growth in the percentage of their ELLs meeting or exceeding the ELA standards. While we have successes, we continue to have challenges. Our eighth grade performance did drop, has continued to drop in ELA since 2014. Something best to look at. And we are struggling with the consistent implementation of adopted best practices, learning targets, instructional materials at school. I think that's one area where we're working, trying to work with middle school principals around that work and trying to engage with them. Again, we're focusing on cultural response and teaching practices, increasing our libraries at the secondary level as well. We're also, all of our dual language middle schools have seen growth in the percentage of their ELLs meeting or exceeding the ELA standards. While we have successes, we continue to have challenges. Our eighth grade performance did drop, has continued to drop in ELA since 2014. Something best to look at. And we are struggling with the consistent implementation of adopted best practices, learning targets, instructional materials at school. I think that's one area where we're working, trying to work with middle school principals around that work and trying to engage them at the same level that we're trying to engage elementary. Our action plan, we are going to continue monitoring student growth with disabilities twice a year in ELA. Again, I've mentioned classroom libraries. We're continuing to implement the ELD curriculum at the secondary level as well. There's also a great deal of focus around implementation of the writer's workshop and the use of the writing units of study. And I included in there that we have increased use of the reading units of study while not part of the initial adoption. We have many teachers who are seeing that by combining the reading and writing units of study, that they are finding that those two work really well together and support their students. And I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Yeah.
All right now.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to talk for a few minutes about math, and it'll be math across the district take well. Just kind of the big theme overall as we think about this is one of the things we're really trying to think about this year is just access to math in general. And so like with access to math, some of the things I'm talking about are like when you look into a classroom of students, who's doing the math? Is it maybe one or two kids? Is it just the teacher? Or is it really the whole group of students? So that's one way that we like to think about access to math. And another way that we like to think about access to math is what students are in our most challenging math classes? And what students are repeating classes that we maybe consider remedial or not giving them towards meeting those, you know, end of high school and early college and mid-year. So just maybe we can kind of keep that in mind as we go through this. The data on your screen now is similar to what Kayla shared with ELA. It's last year's students, so last year's third, fifth, and eighth graders. And the same colors were that orangish color. And as you can see, some highlight would be certainly that we outperform like-sized districts and we outperform the state average. I think if we're going to talk about Sback as a unit of measure, a unit of success, we cannot be happy with 52% of our eighth graders meeting those benchmarks. The same, roughly the same percentage of our fifth graders or the same percentage of our third graders. So while we're proud of our results compared to others, they don't meet our expectations for where we need our students to be. Again, a similar slide showing cohort, the same class of 2023. And you know, an interesting piece is at the elementary, remember, and these are the exact same students, but also the same teachers is what Kayla had shared with us. So we see a similar relative trend. And what I mean by that is BSD follows the trends of the four other large districts as well as the state of Oregon. As far as the general shape, though, we do seem to decrease between that fourth and sixth grade. And then again, that overall increase to seventh, and then overall increase to eighth grade. Again, similar with the previous data, while we're, you know, glad to be the red line, we're glad to be having our students, the most amount of our students meeting grade level standards than others. We would like to see that shift higher to more, certainly all of our students. So moving past Sback scores, as we go to the high school, we look at the ACT exam. And we use the ACT benchmarks for college readiness as sort of our gauge of math. And you know, the same sort of broken record that I'll say with all of our data, if we look to the last year's students, 46.1% of them meeting college benchmark on the ACT, that's not enough students. The trends, though, for the first time at least since 2012, were markedly above the state average in students. And then if we look at both the national, which is the kind of grade outline, and the state, you know, the state of Oregon, so that brown is gold line, they've generally been decreasing over the past few years, while BSD, at least over the past three, has been shown an increase. And all of that, I think it's important to put that in the context that all of that is while we continue to increase our total number of students taking the ACT exam. Another piece of data that we generally use to measure health of our system is ninth grade success or ninth grade on track. And one of the indicators of that is our AGS classes, our math classes. So what you see on this slide is just all of the ninth grade students that are in AGS one or AGS two. And that is now for this current, this current school year, fall of 2019. Is the gold bar. And then you'll see the blue bars are for the previous two years. And in particular, in AGS one, we see a pretty significant decrease in the total number of Fs from years past. Right, the past two years on that left-hand box for AGS one were, you know, right around that 20% failure rate. In fact, I believe it was the number one most failed course in our secondary schools. That's dropped down to 12.5%. Also with a decrease in the total number of Bs, while seeing an increase in the number of As and Bs. So while not a standardized test, it does give us some indication of math success. And you'll see similar, not quite as significant of change with those ninth grade students in AGS two. So some of our successes, we looked at that class of 2023, while small. Generally in middle school, those students, more of those students are meeting benchmark in eighth grade than were in sixth grade. Again, it's a small percent change, while the state saw an average decline over that middle school time. So that's a little bit of a positive. We talked about the ACT exam, the number of students meeting that college readiness benchmark in math is increasing, or at least the percentage of students in the different groups of students taking that is increasing. And like I just said, the decrease in DNF rates and an increase in the A and B rate in both AGS and secondary. The biggest challenge that we see across our system, that we see across the state, and that we see across the nation is that our student outcomes in math are predictable by race and they're predictable by socioeconomic status. If a student comes into us, you know, not that we would want to describe the student solely this way, but if they come into us with certain demographic indicators, we can predict their outcomes in math. And unfortunately, more than often, we would be correct, and it would not be as positive as their peers. Another trend we noticed in math when looking at those cohorts, and I think this does speak a little bit to Kayla's question about the whole state goes this way with trends, but like if you come in and look at the percentage of students meeting benchmark in third grade, if you go all the way to their same eighth grade year, less of them are meeting benchmark. So we wonder what's going on with the test, what's going on with our system? Why are not more students in that cohort finding that success as the math gets more and more challenging? Or at least the tests get more and more challenging? Does that continue to be a challenge? And then one that we're really, I would love, love to spend some time discussing this throughout the years. Our enrollment in what we would all consider to be our most challenging math classes does not reflect the demographic of our district or demographic of our schools, and it's frankly throwing out of the course. But anyway. Ginny kicked me on the table just now.
I did, but it doesn't.
But I think I will share that last piece. It's a bit, I have the data, it sounds anecdotal. If you list out the courses, okay, by the least reflective of our demographic and order it that way. So the least reflective of our demographic and order it that way, it just so happens that also aligns with what you would probably consider to be the hardest math class and the next hardest and the next hardest, all the way down to remedial, where it's overrepresented of a demographic. And we didn't line it up that way on purpose. It just comes out that way, kind of like statistically, right, based on the enrollment. So we, again, that access piece, we are working really hard to make sure that our systems aren't limiting the access students have to that, those high quality math classes. Two highlights of our inputs for math, both elementary and secondary, they're both kind of called lesson studies. So by lesson studies, generally what we mean by that is on-time professional development and instructional coaching that occurs inside the classroom and that's reflective of the exact instruction that's going on. So let me talk about that a little bit for elementary. What it looks like with elementary is we have a team of TOSAs that push into buildings, and they get together with groups of teachers, and the TOSA actually teaches a lesson. And the teachers kind of observe and watch, and then we give feedback. They give feedback to the TOSA, they ask the TOSA questions. And then that group from the elementary school stays together, meets monthly, and talks about what they saw. And utilizes resources to, again, have math be an accessible class for all the students in their class to be not engaging in it. Secondary looks a little bit different. We use a group called Teachers Development Group. It's the TDG, if you saw on that slide of icons or logos. It's still in-classroom professional development, on-demand coaching. But this one looks a little bit different. This one, a teacher volunteers to actually open their classroom up. And rather than having the TOSA teach the lesson, it's actually the teacher of the class teaching the lesson. And they just work on giving each other feedback and working towards improving their math practices around some common expectations of instruction. What TDG also does for us is they work specifically with the administrator of the school and to do some coaching of that administrator on how to lead for math around the data that they see in their school. It's been piloted for the past few years in our most, some of our poverty impacted schools, Aloha, Five Oaks, and Mountain View. All together in the same project, they've all been working together. Show you a little data on that. This is Aloha High School grade distribution data, broken up by Five Oaks and by Mountain View. So if those students went to Five Oaks before Aloha, or if they went to Mountain View before they went to Aloha. And it's the same we looked at before, that overtime A through F data. And what you'll see is just if both Mountain View and Five Oaks, just a significant number more As and Bs and a significant number less Bs and Fs. And so that's something that we hope we can attribute, and we do make that claim that's attributed to the work they're doing with the Teachers Development Group. So our action plan, the biggest action plan I think we have throughout our department is to just, all of these ideas we've shared with you, to make sure that they're actually happening inside the classroom, at the classroom level for all of our teachers. We want to increase the use of what I call norm practice opportunities. And that really is just giving students a little bit more opportunity to practice the types of problems that they'll see either in their assessments, like their teacher developed assessments, or these kind of norm ones like the Sback or the ACT exam. So depending on the grade level, the system to do that's called something else. We're increasing use of common assessments at the elementary. We call those OSAS exposure questions, where the elementary teams can give questions that are mimicking Sback and receive responses to that. We're just looking to expand the use of that. And then we're developing common assessments, really aligned to certain units of the middle school and high school curriculum that will be given at a specific unit of time through some collaborative type software. And then one thing we're really investigating is that idea of AGS one for all in an accelerated way at the eighth grade. The preliminary data I showed you would support that, but we're looking to really make sure that that data is continued over time, that that is the best decision. So that's something else that we're really looking closely.
Okay, so I have the next slide. And I'll turn it over to my colleague, John Potinsky. So I'm just, the next slide I'm going to go over is just some more data. And so when it comes time to the question and answer period, this gives you a perfect reference if you have some questions, similar questions. And very similar to what everyone's been saying, what you'll see are definitely some celebrations, some success, but also some areas of opportunity and growth, which we are definitely not blind to, and we're very proud of. So the first piece here is, this is our 1819, so this is our 1516 cohort. So this is our most recent grad data, to which our overall graduation rate was 85.6. So as you can see here, in terms of our, the TNEC students, 77.1. And that is definitely a celebration, as you can see the longitudinal trend there. So it is the highest it has ever been. And so that's definitely an area of success, nowhere near where we want to be, but I think that is definitely something to take a look at. If you go to the next slide for our black students, you'll see that we did go down within the 1819 graduating class. But again, if you do take a look from 1314, again, this, the whole idea is just to give you some perspective. We have about 100 students, black students overall, within this, the 1819 graduating class. So you can see by losing five to 10 students, what that does for our graduation rate. And so I don't want to say that this downward piece is a trend at all. I absolutely believe that the As and plus is where we believe. If you go to the next slide, this is, as you can see, for our English Language Learners, for the 1819 graduating class, we did go up. However, it wasn't at an all-time high, as you can see, 1617 graduated, 67%. Again, nowhere near where we would like to be. But as you can see, we are above the state average, we're nowhere near where we'd like to be. We like the bump from last year, but we need to. If you take a look at this next one, and this is one where it's definitely an area of opportunity and growth, which we all know is how we're doing in regards to our students with disabilities. And as you can see, we did go down. And this is the only demographic to which we are below the state average in regards to graduation. And so, I mean, the data speaks for itself, this is an area for us to continue to work and focus. So if you take a look here, just to give you an idea, more of a longitudinal piece. Again, if you look at the bottom, the x-axis, 1516, that means the cohort. And then all the way on the left, on the x-axis, the 910. So the comparison, you see those purple lines there on the right? That is our difference between the 910 cohort and the 1516 cohort. And you could see the longitudinal trend has been pretty good in terms of going up. We'd like to see more, obviously, of upward. If you take a look, like for example, with our Hispanic Latino, our Latino students, we'd like to see more path trajectory. But it's, and you can, you can tell that there is an upwards trajectory. Again, the growth, if you take a look at the Latino students from the 910 cohorts to the 1516 cohorts, a 20.6% increase in graduation. The next slide is focuses on FRLs, free and reduced, and then ever ELL. So at any point in time, if you had a student who was an English Language learner, so currently students who are monitor status, for example, they are included within this category. And as you can see, the, our movement in terms of graduating our students of poverty is at an all-time high, and that's definitely something to look at and to celebrate. And then also, if you take a look at the growth in our ever English Language learner, again, those are students on monitor status as well. Significant increase, and the trajectory there has been good as well for it. So if you go, and again, so this is just in a summary, you have a lot of the successes, there are obviously more challenges. That's what was listed in the report, but just to highlight a few. So from a success piece, the four-year graduation rate goes to an all-time high for our economically disadvantaged. As mentioned before, our ever ELL students, Asian, Latino students, Pacific Islander, and multiracial. One thing that we did put in in terms of graph is our five-year cohorts rose to an all-time high at 89.1. And as you can see as well, our five-year cohort graduation rates hit all-time highs, all-time highs for our students with disabilities. So even though we are at 64%, I want you to, at 61% for the four-year cohort. The all-time high for the five, I think is something that we cannot disclose as well. As for our Hispanic, Latino, multiracial, female students. Challenges, as mentioned before, students with disabilities. Action plan, and this is just to highlight a few of the things we're doing. I echo some of the things that Ryan stated. We have a distinct focus on ninth grade on track. And if you were to actually look at ninth grade on track cohort data from this year, it's outstanding. And a lot of that has to do with some of the work our middle schools are doing, but then also the TDG work is also an excellent strategy for some of our, like a school like Aloha, schools of poverty. I don't think we can underemphasize how important ESD checks and credit recovery opportunities are. When it comes time to raising graduation rate, and I tell this to principals all the time, it truly is about tenacity when we get to a certain level. When it comes time to getting past 80% into 85, or even to get 85 to 90, because we're talking about just being tenacious for the kids and for the tenants, in the sense of pulling them across the finish line. And you can't do that unless we have these opportunities available for kids. And that target recovery is a big piece. Do SBLs for a reason, and that is so that we, kids who are missing a few targets don't necessarily have to repeat the entire class, but can make up specific targets as opposed to an entire class. but can make up specific targets, um, as opposed to an entire class. Uh, CTE, like if, John Kuplitsky will go into the data about how well, uh, students, um, from various demographics do within CTE classes. And so you'll see expanded opportunities next year, which we decided about. The construction opportunity over at Merlot, uh, and the manufacturing opportunity at Westview, which will be an option for our management open to all schools. And as Patrick said, uh, school learning plans. I can't, I can't under, or, let's say, underscore the importance of actually what this was. It was quite an endeavor and to have continuity with principals, which led, leads to the piece of accountability that SOB is, um, did, um, around those consistent areas of focus. And one thing Kayla will talk about that I did put up that I should have, is a new attendance framework, which she will talk about later, which I believe will be obligate the lead to these opportunities.
So let's talk, so let's talk for a few minutes before we talk about CT. Just about AVID, it's a significant input, significant investment that we've been working on for a number of years now. And just remember, when we talk about AVID, we're actually talking about kind of two distinct things. One would be AVID school-wide. And so those are just instructional strategies that we wanna see in every classroom, every day throughout our secondary schools. The data that you're going to see is reflected only of those students in the AVID elective class. And I know many of you tutor in that class and that's great, and I won't go into the details of it, but I just wanted to remind you of those two different things. I think it's important to remember who are AVID, who are our AVID students? Um, of the 2,000 students who are, um, currently enrolled in and AVID elective, um, over half of them would, um, you know, qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. And 72% of them are non, are non-white students. Like I said earlier, um, without AVID, we would probably be making predictions different than those that you're going to see over the next few slides. So, sorry. So if you just, thanks Jenny, I'm sorry. Let's just check out some middle school outcomes for a minute. In, in eighth grade, the, the left two lines, right? Enrollment in that AGS1 or that first of kind of the high school series of classes, uh, more of our, more of our eighth graders that are in AVID and are accessing that class and are not in AVID, those, pretty close. Um, earning a C or better, more of our AVID students are earning a C or better in math, or a higher percentage, I guess, than our non-AVID students. Um, and the same in humanities, though, not quite to the same level as, as in math. And again, remembering who those students are and what, um, kind of, uh, what, who those students are, like I shared in the first AVID slide. The next indicator, so let's go a year later and talk about ninth grade. So, uh, just remembering our ninth grade on track just means that by the end of the year, they've earned six or more credits. Um, the, the data's looking great and better and better for all of our students. In particular, AVID students, where 94% of our students have earned those six credits, putting them on track to graduation. And we know that ninth grade is a very strong predictor of, uh, of their future graduation status. So this one, you know, as we look at non-AVID data, if we were to disaggregate by race, um, this is for graduation rate, we would not predict that many of these groups would be outperforming all, all students, right? We looked earlier and the, the trends are shifted the other direction. But if you're an AVID student, um, you actually have a higher percentage, um, of the rest of your cohort and even, um, a higher percentage than the overall student. So like, but what I mean by that is looking at our Latinx graduation rate, right? 90% of our AVID students graduate on time, well, that's higher than the all student mark. Um, if we look at our Black African-American students, another way to look at, look at it is just their overall group, 75% would be, um, graduating, where AVID students, it's a 96%. Go, oh, go ahead Jenny, that's fine. Um, just looking forward now beyond high school, beyond graduation. This past year, we had 210 seniors that were in our AVID elective classes. Uh, 206 of them graduated on time. And 120 of them enrolled in college immediately following. So 63% of that original demographic I showed you enrolled in college the semester immediately following graduation. If we go two years back, we had a smaller group of AVID seniors, 120. 87 of them, so 73% enrolled in college that first semester. And, um, 72 or 83% persisted to a second year. So again, using those, uh, using those percentages, that certainly goes well beyond what we would expect using the kind of national norm data around persisting in college for that second year. Now I'll pass it over to Pat.
All right, thank you. Um, some highlights. In our district, we continue to, um, have students graduate at a high rate of those who are BSC, CTE concentrators, similar to Oregon, um, and national trends. And for the, for us, um, just note, a couple of notes here. A concentrator is a student completing one or more credits in a CTE program of study. And, uh, we, in Oregon, they give us our data, uh, we're a year behind, um, our regular data. Takes a longer to figure out concentrators, so we get in here, here behind. So we're, it's a little harder to make judgments on. But, uh, in 17, 18, we added the AGS, uh, education program. So programs, even at high school, we added a digital media program at Southbridge. And we have added a Aloha High School film. So what we're trying to do is create programs for students in, um, in demographics where they're underrepresented across the board. So, uh, while we may see a decrease in the graduation rate for CTE, but I think that would be encouraging because we are attracting, um, more students and more diverse students. And so we're trying to add programs for them to get, uh, them tied into school and relevant, uh, programs as well. And like, uh, Dr. Franco mentioned, uh, next slide. We are adding two new magnet programs next year, one in manufacturing at Westview and, uh, construction program at Merlot, where those will be open to, uh, students from across the district. And hopefully we continue to build those programs and attract more students. Using nation 98 funds to support facilities and equipment enhancements in all our programs. We, and we have over doubled our number of programs of study in CTE over the last several years. Our Perkins allotments, uh, has not, uh, stayed the same. So we're dividing the same amount of money to more programs. And so nation 98 has helped, uh, supplement, uh, getting those programs. We are currently under a very comprehensive needs assessment for that Perkins buy reoperation. Hope to, uh, have results to share.
So I have the pleasure of wrapping it up with attendance. For all of this work to happen, we need students to be in class, in their seats, doing the work. So our quote here is, "Do it again and again. Consistency makes the raindrops to create holes in the rock. Whatever is difficult can be done easily with regular attendance, attention and action." So this slide is about our regular attenders. These are students with 90% or higher attendance rates. And this is how we compare to other 10K districts and the state. And then this last slide, um, for attendance, gives you again some trend data to look at attendance, Beaverton's attendance in the state of Oregon attendance. And you can see that, uh, attendance is dropping. But what are we gonna do about it? So, as I mentioned earlier, we have an MTSS team, multi-tiered system of support team. And that team is really looking at the work that was done last year and trying to build on that work around attendance. And what we're trying to produce is a PK12 document around our best attendance practices and, uh, work around intervention. And to do that, what we know is that we need care teams in buildings. These are teams that are looking at not only attendance data, but they're also looking at, um, uh, reading, writing. They're looking at interventions, looking at behavior, uh, as well. And they need to be using data to inform their practices. So part of the work that the team is doing is working with IT. And we are creating a system, um, like a FIDG, it's an early warning system. We have some people do, uh, trying out different parts of that work. But really, it's a place where teachers and the care teams can get together and pull specific data on their students to decide what are the next steps and what are the appropriate interventions. Those interventions can, can be universal strategies around how the school in general motivates students to be there. What does it look like for early intervention? Is it phone calls home? Is it connected with counselors? And what are the intensive support centers needed? So the care teams, we could probably talk a long time about that, but happy to share some documentation with you if you, um, would like further information. But that is the work we're rolling out this spring with our principals. I'll turn it back to you.
Right, so we did take longer than expected, so I apologize for that. We had a lot to share. And most of all, we want, um, you to see how complex this work is and how hard and how dedicated we are to working through it and with your help can do that as well. Um, you have all the data, or have had all the data to do the work out. This is the time where we're gonna ask questions that I do wanna leave us with thinking about being the whole child. In the end, your legacy won't be about your success. It will be about your significance and the impact you made on every student, every day. And whether you were willing to do whatever it took to inspire them to be more than they ever thought possible. Um, last year, we had Jenny Costas come to, um, our district and speak to the principals on creating a culture and climate of inclusivity and positive, um, um, positive momentum going forward. So we, um, are committed to seeing that our kids are healthy, our teachers are healthy, um, our administrators are healthy, and then making sure that we're doing the best we can for, um, student achievement. So thank you for the time. Um, we have, um, thought about questions, hoping that, as you can see in your pocket, maybe we start with overall questions and then if you want to, um, go deep into ELA or math, then we'll do those separately so that we can kind of do them all together. Okay?
Okay, well, first one, thank you all. And I, um, I know this is very hard work and challenging work, and I want to recognize that. And what I'm about to say, please don't take personally. But I'm, you know, very concerned about the students of color and the appearing that their, um, their performance is dropping significantly, depending on which group, depending on which grade level. Um, and I was just kind of struck by the, I know this was not intentional, but this is how I interpreted it, that there was no comment about the growth mindset, which I know everyone is always talking about and saying. And when, when you come and say things like, I'm sorry, I'm just talking, um, about, um, how race is a predictor, or social economics is a predictor of how a student is going to achieve, that to me means that the teachers then have lower expectations, the district has lower expectations, and you're not focusing on the growth mindset, which is what I thought you were going to be doing. And so I'm getting to my question here. And so with that, when I then look at the report and all the data, and then I look at the principal's feedback and survey comments, and they say things like, they're overwhelmingly positive about their practices improving and that they're effective leaders. And how they also report that their understanding of curriculum materials has deepened, which is turned as having a positive impact on student growth. There's a huge disconnect there, obviously, because how can they feel that way looking at these numbers unless there's the expectation that race, if you're a student of color, you're not expected to do well? So I was wondering, what can you say about that? That was very troubling to me. That's one question.
Right, okay. So a couple of things. I wanted to thank you for giving that question to us ahead of time. And so our whole team has had a chance to digest, to think about it, to really, um, focus in on what you're asking because it really is, um, something we all care deeply about. And so, um, first of all, I will say that the growth mindset is, is, um, bifur, something that we have not only, um, paid attention to in all of our schools, but also believe that at the 18 as well. Um, I am going to ask both Ms. Sugar and Pat a little bit to kind of talk about, um, some, we, we had this discussion in TNL a little bit earlier today and really wanted to focus in on certain aspects of it, not certainly can answer the question completely because it is pretty broad. And, um, so I'm going to let them kind of give the sound out of it. And then we'll kind of go on down then.
Well, I can just start by saying that, um, we added the equity slides, uh, at the end, obviously based on some of the questions that you raised. And we're very, very well aware that, um, the work that we did in disaggreging that data by subgroups and presenting that information is the work that we are engaged in and we're committed to, um, in teaching and learning. But there is that bigger picture that you need to understand around equity work and how the environment in which our students are, uh, our students of color are in, on our staff of color are in, it is really, really important. So if they're not feeling safe in those environments, then that directly impacts their ability to achieve, um, as well as the, um, academic environment overall and the school culture. And so that's one of the reasons why we brought in Pat to the discussion of, what is, can he speak to something that is, that he's working on district-wide to help in that area? So how does the overall district environment and the work around equity lead to a culture and teaching and learning around equity? Lead to then a school culture around equity? And then lead to a classroom culture around equity that then influences the teacher and student relationship? Does that make sense? So there's that overall environment from the district to teaching and learning, the work we do, to the classroom, to the school culture, that's very, very, very important, and then to the classroom level. And so do you wanna speak to your work here?
Sure. Yeah, and I'll maybe provide context and apologies if this is out of place. But for me, this story kind of gets personal, the work gets very personal. Because what brought me into this position was, um, too many years of seeing similar data uh, from the classroom perspective and being, uh, reflective on it and wondering, okay, so if that's district-wide data, is that happening in my class? And so being very aware of, of the role of discipline in my class, the role of assessment and achievement for all students. Um, so coming into it, my thought is, the, I totally agree that it's about changing our mindset. Our schools, um, have not historically done the best job of being safe, inclusive and culturally affirming spaces for all students. I don't think we're rare that way. I think that's kind of the, the state of our schools nationwide. So the work that we're doing, um, is both kind of more immediate and long-term. One of the things I wanted to point out that I could put into that slide is I think last week's community conversation event at Southridge High School was the kind of thing that is an immediate event that we can do to start empowering the voices of primarily our students and families of color, but all students in talking about these things. Um, coming up in March, I'm gonna be working with our HR department to provide implicit bias in hiring, training, mandatory training for all supervisors and administrators involved in that. Because when we look at why students aren't doing as well as we should expect them to in our classes, a lot of that has to do with whether or not they see themselves embodied in the staff they work with. That has to do with making sure we have folks who know how to hire for the diversity of the needs of our students. So even though that might seem disconnected, that's, that's in an effort to create, um, spaces that are more inclusive and that also then help us retain the staff of color that we have currently, because that's a concern as well. Ongoing training after that is our, our partnership with the Oregon Center for Educational Equity, which will be a long-term and sustained partnership that involves, um, both in-depth and two-day trainings in an ongoing manner that will ultimately impact, that has, ultimately the goal would be 100% staff get, get this training and an equity-focused training. Along with the Leadership Summit this summer that's going to be in equity focus. And then what feels at sometimes like a very minor step, uh, in the fall, all Beaverton staff are gonna be doing one of the Safe Schools Training Module on racial bias and cultural competency. It feels small because it's a 16-minute module that has, uh, three sections and a couple of tests that is a very basic starting point, but it's a 100% better than what we offer right now, which is not looking that way. So those are the things that, that, um, we're hoping in the collective begin to start changing the way that our, our buildings accept and welcome students of color and families of color, that our teachers interact with them, and that we start creating spaces where students can, uh, see themselves as, um, being viewed with high expectations by our, by our district. Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, and currently, I got to attend Thursday, Brad Parker and Matt Heidgill held the Social Studies cadre meeting, the first one, where they are looking at K-12 implementing the new state ethnic study standards, Holocaust standards and American, Indian, Alaskan native tribal history, shared history standards. So we're gonna be seeing in our social studies content, um, K-12 curriculum that much better reflects, uh, our students where they can see themselves in their learning, which was one of the incidents that we heard at the last school working, by the way.
So I guess, so I guess then there really, really is. So I guess, so I guess then there really, really isn't an answer about the disconnect then between the principals and the reason and their data. So there's no answer there. I understand how sort of things we're doing, there's no disconnect. I mean, there is a disconnect. So the question is, what sort of, what are, what is the district going to do to make sure the principals understand the urgency and understand there's a problem, because you can't address anything unless you understand that there's a problem? And then second to that, the accountability piece, because I know it was shared that they're going to be accountable to their peers, which means to me nothing. So who, how, how is this accountability is going to happen? Who's going to be the leader? We haven't already articulated who is leading this charge. Who's leading it here? Who's leading it at the, at the school level? And where's the accountability, at the district level or at the school level?
Um, yes. Yes, you can.
I don't want to overstep my bounds here. So, great questions. And first of all, I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding, that there is accountability for what we just mentioned. This is our passion, as the TNL department. And the reason we put in there under areas of concern that graduation, like for example, or race predicts graduation is because it still does. And if we were to just kind of go through without actually stating that, to me, that'd be a bigger issue. But we are stating it because we know that is an area of concern and an issue. I can tell, I can, from a secondary perspective, also, you know, I'll let the elementary people kind of talk a little bit. This is overall what we've been doing from a leadership perspective. We're talking about in-depth PD around CRT. If you walk into any high school, for example, even secondary school, I think that they'd be able to tell you to a T what the data says. And they would tell you where they're, and then also tell you things that they're doing, not only from a system perspective, but then also from a PD perspective. You know, it was interesting, and one of the PD moments that we had last year was we did a philosophical chairs as a secondary group with the overarching question of all teachers should talk about race in class. Like, we did that last year. And it was interesting, because it was stratified. So we had about 60% said, no, they absolutely should. And 40% said, no, I don't think they should. I think if we were to ask that question this year, that you would get almost 100% saying, absolutely, we have to do this. And mind you, that 40% last year that said, no, I don't think so, it's because they're worrying about doing more harm than good, whereas now it's more of, this is a need for our kids. Kids will give you race if you have conversations about race, they just want to see that. And I think the more that we can give autonomy to not only principals, but more so teachers, like for example, if something happens outside in the world or society that's centered around race that clearly affects them as kids, that we don't teach math, that we actually stop and we dialogue with them about what this actually means. And so there's, and I can't, I can't emphasize that enough about how passionate we are with this, that we're very cognizant about the data. And until we actually can get to that point where race does not predict graduation or those types of things, we're going to keep calling it out. And we're going to keep calling it out to our principals, because they need to see them. And that's where the accountability is going to lie. It's our continually call-out that we're going to be doing.
And just, just add some structural changes that we also made as a district is when Pat was hired on, he is now, I think Jenny mentioned it, he is now supervised by Don. He also now is part of cabinet. So we are having a lot of discussions at the cabinet level around equity, race, and almost every week, basically, and some content around equity that we, that we grapple with and we try to make decisions around.
Well, at the cabinet level, last week, we did kind of looking at systems change and we worked with the Northwest Regional ESD and kind of were looking at what are some of the problems of practice that are inherent in our district. And one of them was kind of talking about our having safe, inclusive environments and taking that on as a cabinet to say, what do we need to be doing to help support? So if we do this in cabinet, how will that help with teaching and learning, which will then help our principals and support kind of that, yeah.
And the biggest accountability, I would say, just, just one more thing, the biggest accountability is, is really coming from the board. So your work and your questions around equity is really going to help drive that throughout the system. And so your keen sense of the data, looking at the data, breaking it down, asking questions about the subgroups, really does help the whole system at large. So I'm really, really excited that you're asking these questions, because it does force the conversations throughout the system.
So I, I've, I've, I've got a whole list of questions, so.
Pat, I just, I just want to have a follow-up to that.
Yeah.
Just, I think as a board, at least as long as I've been on it, I would say the board's been pretty focused on this particular issue. And so trying to understand pacing and expectations and like, my head's kind of, you can't see, but I've got one of those emojis on right now with my head exploding, because we've added a 16-minute module to teacher training and I'm like. Why that is finally happening now and not a long, long, long time ago, I, I'm stupefied. I, I don't even know how to like, talk about like, what kind of glacial pace or should be expected? If it's not, you know, when Donna talks about accountability, I know what she's meaning is like, that's not acceptable. What do we, what else can be or should we be doing to support this? Because that's not okay pace. No.
Part of what I'll bring that about is a conversation between, so with something like that, I mean, 16 minutes, I know that that's a, that seems like a little bit, but that, when you think about those.
Because it is. Let's be clear.
But it, it requires negotiation of different factors. So there was the teacher contract, because it is asking, well, it would be all contracts, actually, sorry, I'm still coming with the T ones. Because it, it requires that time. And so part of it is working with the, the unions, which were actually enthusiastic about it, provided that there be time. So then had a conversation with principals. Is this something that we could do? Like, what if this 16-minute module was used as the foundation of real professional development that you offered throughout the year? And then, like in my position, I am looking forward to coming up with a list of resources that, that leaders can use with their staffs to do that. I think that part of it is like, is discovering the resources that are out there. And I would agree, sometimes it feels slow, but part of it is, this is, this is part of a larger national conversation that we're only now getting more comfortable with. And so those, for those things to be on there, I don't even know when the Safe Schools module appeared as part of the offerings. So it, it does feel glacial at times. I think, like, like John said, though, there's a lot of enthusiasm around where we are now. And I think building leaders are, are excited to do this work along with their staff. A lot of staff.
Can I try to add a little bit, a little bit on the accountability aspect specifically with the principals and whether it's through teachers, our execs and whatnot? So that is why I think you heard a little bit about school presentations and some of the school presentations. We're having some pretty critical conversations with them, looking at their data and challenging them and saying, why isn't this happening? And then I think internally, as an organization, we're looking at the way we staff schools, predominantly around some of our lower SES schools, and should they be being staffed the same way? Because we know some of these students, whether it has to be with language issues or socioeconomic status, they should be staffed. To Ann's point, why has it taken this long to figure this out? Things move, and, and when we do this, you can, nobody likes to say winners and losers, but there are going to be people that are going to see themselves as losers, because their staffing is really beautiful. So I think we are, we are moving to that. This is a complex issue, and this isn't just in Beaverton. I think that it's, it's all over. And Donna, have your sense of urgency? Why is it taking so long? Because the longer it takes, you've got to remember that every year, how many kids are going to our schools? And they're graduating in the, well, and then they're going out into the world and they're not prepared, they're not prepared like other students. So there's a, there is a sense of urgency. And I guess when we start, I'll, I'll just say, when we start incorporating some of these changes, I will tell you, there will be people coming to this board and they will not be happy about already some of the changes that we're starting to institute now. People are, that we're planning for, people are getting winded, all the way from, oh, you've been, you've been in the mix of it. Let's, let's just talk about a grading, giving every student, whether you're a student of color, a student of poverty, making sure that they have that frequent and accurate input. I'll just say, I think that this group understands the sense of urgency, they've had it from, they've got it from me. I, and I truly believe all, if not all, almost every principal understands the sense of urgency that we're, we're coming up on.
Okay. The other shift that I have seen, just, I've only been in my position for a year and a half, is we used to talk about your, your score that you get, the overall score. And it used to be, what's your action plan for, let's say you got 75% met and exceeded at the state level on the test? Then we talked about, well, we got that 25%. But I feel like we've had conversations now where we now break it down. I was at a school today, and we looked at, this is like the fourth time that we've looked at all the different sections within the testing, whether it's students with disability, whether it is, you know, poverty, whatever. What is your action plan now? And what has worked? And what is your action plan between now and the end of the school year? And I think there's a lot of focused conversations that no one gets to see or hear about, but it's no longer, we've broken it up into, instead of it being overall now, it's very individual. So I, I was at a low humor today, and then also at McKinley, and both schools, we had that kind of same conversation you were talking about. I don't know, Patrick?
Well, I would just say too, I, I, I think that principals reporting that they're feeling stronger about it is that growth mindset that you're talking about. But underneath that is a deep sense of urgency, and it comes through in their school learning plan. And it's part of why we wanted and asked for them and helped them accountable to an equity goal, an academic excellence goal, and a collaboration goal. And within that, some of the goals, I wrote down some of the examples of some of the growth of the goals that people are doing for equity and academic excellence. It's from increasing percentage of students meeting exceeding. It's around connecting families, all families to schools, way to communicate, way to bring families in, student access to their learning, increasing percentage of students that are C or better, increasing on-track freshman percentages, student connections and relationships with adults in their school, focusing on exclusionary practices. Those are the underlying pieces that principals are coming and saying, I, I want to be held accountable. And part of that to their peers is saying, I want my peers to hold accountable. But more importantly, it's that accountability to us, it's accountability to their school communities. So there is that, yeah, we are learning, we are getting better, but we also know we have work to do. And that's that growth mindset versus what you're seeing as the goals in their school learning plans.
Do your students have some, do your students have a choice in front of you? Not my additional questions.
Okay, can I go back to, gee, thanks for saying. One is kind of at a state level, about the smarter balance test. Is it the right test for our students? I don't even know how many, how many states are using smarter balance versus the other. Is it equitable? And do we look at that as a state? So I don't know the answer there, but I would like to know the answer there. Because we're looking at that, we're looking at the scores, and then it would also go back into curriculum, getting deeper, you know? So it'd be nice if they concerned that, and it's sure if they concerned all of ours. And then going back to Patrick's comment about the plan, it'd be nice to have access to what those plans are, like at a web page or something like that. Because when a principal comes and they retoured out these things, I don't have, you know, talking about connections, I don't have the connection. So I mean, and I have other comments about some of the other things that were talked about. But, you know, I totally understand what Donna's saying about growth. I, I believe that, I mean, I don't know if we as a district are set up for quote-unquote success for our students, because I don't, you know, there's things, I don't know if, you know, we have to say, okay, I'm going to say it anyway, the curriculum that we're teaching now in elementary schools, well, we're seeing a dip in math. And those kids, then, the dip in math are going to be, I said this at the school board meeting last, whatever that was, have a gap going into middle school, and then you still have a gap going into high school. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, and, you know, can we can look through the equity lens is, because you can see that. I'm concerned that, well, at the moment in time, as we see urgency, we're, our kids are missing out right now. So, I mean, that's where I'm coming from.
I got, just want to say, sort of tack on that just a little bit, is that we have heard from principals that part of the problem is the teachers do not, are struggling with the teaching the new concepts. How long are we going to wait? Because as Susan says, kids are not going to be performing and it's going to impact them. Because as we say about English Language Arts, if you can't read by the third grade, you're not going to graduate. You can't do math, that's going to impact it. So how long are we going to wait for the teachers to get the concepts? We can't wait any longer. We need to do something, maybe put different teachers in who know what they're doing and put all the kids together or something. But we can't wait any longer.
I will say that I would say everyone must agree with what you're saying, and we also believe that what we're doing is heading in the right direction. Do we think it's quick enough? No. Is it fast enough? No. But I will tell you that what we have seen is something I never saw when I was teaching twenty years ago. The depth to what we teach, our critical thinking, whether it be math or ELA, far surpasses anything I taught 20 years ago. So whatever progress we're making, we're making deep ones in the terms of ELA and math, and some are getting it quicker than others. But what I can say and what I have heard, and I love the word accountability, I feel that I've never seen as much accountability in our district as I do right now for our teachers and for our administrators. And I will say that being both of those at a certain time, and I have to tell you, I did not have any accountability for what I was teaching in my classroom. I did not have an executive administrator all the time in my building as a principal. I did not have people asking the question, and I did not have somebody that I knew that there was a department, a district, a superintendent that believed in equity and believed that we want to do better. It's, and I know, I'm going on my soapbox right now, but it really is at its prime right now. Can we do better? Yes. Our teachers have taken this transformational change in how they're teaching. And you know what? I had my daughter just last night, she was in tears, because she is one of those third grade teachers that is overwhelmed, right? And I was worried, she was talking about, you know, footing and all those things. But the way she talks about equity is, is so much further advanced than I ever did when I was teaching the third grade years ago. So I know that we have a long way to go, but I will tell you, the accountability from this team, execs, Don, it's huge. Our, our staff is feeling it, our principals are feeling it, our teachers are feeling it. And I'm not only saying that in a positive way. Some of that is, they're, they're feeling the stress.
The unions really?
Right, right. They're feeling the stress because of our expectations. I don't know if somebody wants to pull that apart, but I think everybody would agree that it's, it's there. So I have one more question.
One more question and then a request.
Okay.
And then I'll stop. So.
So.
All right. So, so my next question has to do with the thing I bring up every single year often, which is the disproportionate out-of-school suspension rates of students of color versus other students. And here we're talking about creating a climate of inclusivity. To me, that seems like, if you could address that, that would take care of a lot of the problems. Now, I have been to the National School Boards Association Conference, there have been other school districts that have given presentations on how impactful this is. We all know it's impactful, there's data, but yet we can't seem to do anything. There are certain schools that are more problematic than others when it comes to that. We know which teachers have issues. The leadership should come from the principal in how to address that, you know, and making sure that the teachers know how to manage their classroom or to help them bring in additional support or whatever. But there are certain schools, there are certain teachers within those schools where people are not feeling that they can function because of the significant number of out-of-school suspensions compared to the non-students of color who mostly have in-school suspensions. So I'm just making a statement, but nothing's happening there.
And I, and I don't know if you have access to this data, but I can talk to you a little bit about some expulsion in particular. You mentioned suspensions, but it's obviously expulsion is expulsion. So one of the things, along with changing practice, sometimes, obviously foundationally, you want to change, you want people to change, not necessarily. you want to change, you want people to change, not necessarily because, well, not because they have to generally, but because they want to. Like, you wanna try and grow that within, but at the same time, you have to realize that sometimes you've gotta change systems, right? And that, and then people just kinda follow along. And one of the systems that was changed last year was no more bridges. And along with that piece came the sense of urgency to figure out what to do intervention-wise as a system and as a school with the buildings. And so, for example, a strategy is, at the secondary level, all assistant principals and student managers have to take restorative practices too. And we're talking about a two-day training on restorative practice. And we're talking about, these are administrators, right, who are on the ground dealing with students all the time. Also, the advent of, we call it a case team, to go into buildings, to push principals and to get them to think reflectively when it comes time to potentially expel a student where you potentially could, whether it be for a drug offense or something along those lines. A case team actually going in and asking the right questions. So this is current data that we have at the semester. Last year at this time, there were forty-five expulsions. Up to this point, this year we have fourteen. And that is hard work. And there has been pushback from principals, there has been pushback from teachers who want their top of the class, you know, so we can see that. But I'd have to say, the work is worthwhile. And as you can see by the data, people are taking more ownership for their kids. So there's no more of that exclusionary pieces from expulsion perspective.
And suspensions?
Suspensions, I don't have the, I haven't looked at the current.
I'd be curious to see, because that's more problematic, because usually an expulsion is for something like a gun or drugs or something.
No, 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 it's not just for that. And I would say from a suspension piece, I know the middle schools have worked on it, but the high school level, especially when you're talking about restorative practices, that's the idea, you keep students in school. Because, I think we all know it, sometimes kids, that's what they want. And what is the function of it? We're trying to get to that point. And we all know that actually serving the kids in school is actually better and better for them than having them go home where they don't have the supervision of the services.
And I will quickly speak to the elementary level when it comes to suspensions. And as you know, we've worked with VDA this last year to provide behavior points for schools to work on in each elementary school. So they had to work with their teachers to make sure that those plans are implemented and used. And you'll see a lot of pushback from teachers who do or don't want their kids to be suspended. And so there's a lot of working with our teachers as well, giving them the tools that they need for behavior, classroom management in their classrooms. So that's a big social emotional piece that we're working on with NTS.
And I think that's where I wanted to, you know, go into. One of the things that we haven't, as much as we've invested time to build standard-based learning framework, a really like solid model around learning targets for ELA and GAP, one area that we haven't is around kind of the behavioral health and wellness of students. And so we've asked teachers to manage behavior in their classroom, but haven't provided them the tools to be able to do that. And so the tool that they want, you know, that they go to or feel like they, you know, that's their only option, is to ask their principal to suspend a student. So what we're doing is spending the time, and we will have this tiered support. We talk tier one, tier two, tier three, but I like to think about it as all is tier one, some is tier two, and few is tier three. And then when we think about behavioral health and wellness, what kind of tools? So this is an intervention you can do. It's, here's the definition of it, here's an example of it, and this is how you can track it. We haven't invested in a system to do that work, which I think leads to, and now the case team is really working at, but we gotta do that universally, right? So that we don't have kids who even need a case team, because we have teams embedded in the buildings who can do that work. And we have the people there who are trained to be able to do it. One of the great things about doing the restorative practices training is that we are having our administrators open their mindset to that work. However, there aren't people in the building then to do the conferencing. So that is where we're trying to figure out, hey, who's gonna do the conference? Because an AP could spend every single day, all day, doing restorative conferences. So we have to think about how do we train counselors, a larger support team? And that's where our student success teams that we're talking about as a strategy through SIA come into play and helps them do that. So there's some solid work going for that question.
So I have one request, actually, my request now, is I know you touched upon in your presentation, you talked about, you know, flex, avid, blah blah blah. What I'd like to have is another, what school board members wanted, but anyway, just a list of the different programs that have come online and the years they've been online. Because I'd like to overlay that against the data. In addition, I'd like to see another column, an exciting report by the each school with the year that the teacher has been principal there. Because I just wanna see, because sometimes, you know, things change because you have a new principal. There's other factors that go into, when you're looking at data, it's just not all clearly determined by the numbers you see. It could be going in great gangbusters because you got a good, a new principal in there. It could be going down because you have a new principal in there. And I won't know by looking at the data than its current configuration. And the other thing is, and another I was wondering if I will feel, can you comment out to this too? Is just seeing data from a longer period of time. Because I know going back forward, so we could see more and more years. Because the student who went to start a kindergarten in two thousand and six pretty much is gonna be graduating in two thousand and nineteen. So I would like to see the data over that period of time. I know we can't always tell, because kids go to different schools, like, you know, they feed into different schools. It won't necessarily all directly roll up into the high school, but I think it gives you some sense as to how that group is doing. And so if you know what sort of programs went on online, maybe you could draw some. I know that's what you guys are supposed to be doing, you don't share that with us necessarily. So either share that sort of analysis with us or provide the data so we can draw our own conclusions. But that's what I'm thinking.
Sure, we will, I see John taking notes right here. So we will provide on the meeting for you.
Now, I'll piggyback on, one of the things that I noticed in the reports, and I was really glad to see it in the science effect, I guess, my particular request was that when we get the data. I went through and did my own cohort analysis. It would've been great if I didn't have to do my own. But I also thought, how cool that I could do my own. Like, that actually is a seaching by itself, that it was possible.
Yeah, that's great.
As a system, we weren't able to. I'm gonna chart the higher rate, my school board rate. But I guess it would just like to acknowledge that it was possible. I mean, we didn't use to actually have that kind of data that you could go through and track as a cohort and be able to see, like, and frankly, it was discouraging, right? And you could see at every level where our kids in Beaverton, I guess my overall sum of the cohorting is that, as a whole, students in Beaverton start out generally better than the state. And we do not harm them more than other kids starting within the state by four A P. But as they progress through our system, it is pretty steady down. So I'm excited for our next topic. I don't wanna take too much more time, because I believe that the work is all connected and that is a key bit. If you get Donna the data around the programs, I would like to see a number of cases. Because one of the questions that I saw here was, you know, we're looking at the added numbers and at the grade, I know it's a small number of kids, particularly those who stay with the program, as opposed to like the investment that we're making in CTE, where one class or two classes is really, you know, making a big difference in student engagement. And, you know, as we make really hard choices as a system, which we will be, right? And maybe it'll be a port for board members to just have that context of what's gonna pay off.
So my overall observation was similar to Dan's. So I don't really have a question, I'm just really discouraged, because almost across the board, and you wrote it down to children of color, but where we ended up in seventeen eighteen is worse than when we started in thirteen fourteen. So I hope that raises the question for everybody, we gotta change the way we're doing things. And, because whatever we're doing is not what's, it's not advancing those core cohorts, it's not advancing the kids. And you're right, we're doing less harm than the rest of the state is doing to their children. But we're really not doing what's right for kids, because we can't do better. We know our kids are capable of performing better. Maybe it's the social emotional wealth or health of our students. And I do think that is major, and that's been in the last five years. So hopefully these teams will be, but I know it's not one magic bullet that's gonna bring all our kids up. But I'm hoping that this really, really challenges our leadership, even at the school level, to do better and think about things doing different, because what we're doing is a.
I'd like to second Donna's request to, I think that's a great request for that data. And what I was thinking about is, we talked about this accountability conversation is often, I don't know, I think it's some truism, like what you measure, you value, right? And I was wondering if a lot of the outcomes for our students of color are being predicted based on how they feel at school, whether they feel safe or not, can we be measuring that? Because I know that when I see the elementary school reports, right, we have a measurement for the number of students who feel like an adult cares about them in their life. Could we extend something out like that and get some subgroup data? Because that will then allow us to be able to track this across future years and hopefully drive improvement. And then that kinda combines with like the original question that was popping in my mind as I was looking through this, how do we measure social emotional learning? And, because that could be something that's casting a wider umbrella over all of the other data that we're seeing. And I know there's different ways of looking at that data, and I haven't found one way that's particularly compelling, you know? I ask about room clearers at the school board meetings, but that's only a small section of what's actually happening in our classrooms. It may not even be representative of the issue.
Sure. But what we're looking at in front of our work is around a universal screening tool. So that will be one of the measures. So as we look at SIA, we have to have a measurement. So between the Oregon Health Authority student surveys and a possible universal screener, that's gonna have a, that'll be a help support.
The proxy group is how does attendance, do you think that is proxy?
I mean, we've done, we did a survey. And what we found is that students who presented, so we did this a couple of years ago when we added our social workers, students who met with a staff member for a kind of what would be termed a behavioral health issue, anxiety, depression, they, the data linked to attendance, you could see that they were, tended to be our chronic non-attenders. So our chronic non-attenders are also experiencing behavioral health, you know, challenges.
I'd love to see a subset of data that was as rich on that issue in attendance as we have in other areas.
Yeah, I mean, my experiences aside, I totally agree with that, considering how the people, I know that has an issue. I'm gonna go back to something that last week would happen, because I'm thinking about our principals and, you know, in terms of the embracing what our students are saying. And last week, we went to, I mean, a lot of us were at the community discussion on race. And I went to two sessions, one of them was the Latinx discussion on what it's like to be Latinx in our, in Beaverton, in Dallas, Arizona. But it was students speaking, and they were, and it was very emotional. And it was very truthful. And I don't know if our teachers have the opportunity to hear these kids speak about their experiences. And I wish it was videotaped, because what we heard in there was authentic discussions about their fears, that, you know, Latinx children are feeling from extenuating circumstances that we don't have control over, but it's affecting them going to school every single day. You know, the same thing for many of our students of color. So that's my point about, you know, in terms of getting the message out there. I don't know, again, if there was any recordings out, if there was none. I mean, but it's unfortunate, because it was a very authentic discussion that every single teacher and principal and honestly, parent should be hearing, you know, about what our kids are feeling in our schools and why they're fearful. So, I mean, it's a great discussion.
No, no, I don't, I just, I need to, I need to get. Make sure there's clarity of what I was requesting for the list of programs. And also, would you also include in there, you know, when you had curriculum adoption and any additional resources, like the career success coaches, the success coaches, and the accretive counselors, and, you know, just sort of things like that. So here's what I would like to do.
Sorry.
No, here's what I'd like to do. First of all, Eric, you've not heard from me at all, is there anything you?
I have one like, I mean, this, these are some big topics, but like, kinda like Louis Thomas saying, I'd like, love to have like, maybe some more metrics and data, probably John, you know, using the stat man. But like the social emotional tracking, whether we have student success coaches or social workers, I mean, these are all things that, you know, feels like they could be quantified. Stuff they're talking about, I mean, maybe we can quantify them. Start really having, you know, our data versus the annual data of a principal's report. Feels like, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, the trade-offs that they may be gonna go on. You get, you know, more metrics, what you can measure, you know, see if it's working or not.
All right, one of the things I wanna add to that, you didn't include it in your package, is we do take AORIs on many of our avid and SEC coaches. So we do have data, for instance, our coaches are collecting data on how many of our kids are going from tier one to tier two, tier two to tier three. So we do have our academic return on investment on about six of our priorities.
Totally off the subject question that happened, it's about the online flex. Is that expanding so more students can take advantage of it? Not only just those students that have recovered, because I know that's a big focus, but I know some principals are extending it. But especially to those kids that, for whatever reason, are feeling uncomfortable with the class. It's a great, you know, so we're not going to connections heavy.
Well, we have long-term plans to expand it, but right now we're just gonna. We haven't dedicated.
It's a big mental health issue. It's a big mental health issue.
We need to address it, what can expand what's gonna happen.
I think one thing that might help, because I'm looking at John, so he's not guessing. Maybe board members could talk about whether it's cohort data or some of the other data. I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of data, so if you need to narrow it down.
So this is why, this is, no, we're gonna, we're gonna stop, we're gonna stop, okay? So that's, here's what we're gonna do. We can go off, and I know we confuse the staff more than we need them to actually. So here's what we're gonna do, here's what we're gonna do. We're either gonna come up that this is gonna be taken on at a committee level, and we'll all get our input of what we wanna see done. We're going back in April, doesn't have to be this whole thing, but when we value something and we take, we can't be doing this once a year and then not know why something didn't work.
Right.
There's a whole lot going on here, and we're taking on middle school schedules that we still have to talk about here. We gave you guys a whole bunch of stuff and a whole bunch of things that we're not having. There's, whether it's be the return on our investment, we're gonna have to be making choices with our budget coming up, whether it's four task five, whatever tools that we are using, we have tools. We need to come to you, to you, because you could see we're all over what it is that we need and want. I think the bottom line that we can take away from this is we are all dedicated to doing what is best for our students. And that comes in a whole bunch of different pieces here. We are going to have to be making budgetary decisions here going forward. And so I would like to see whether we come up with, we want a committee that already exists, if we want a task force, but plan on coming back to the April work session with, because we're not gonna let this go until next year and what kind of pieces we have in place. And we also have to change what kind of things we wanna look like in this report. The other thing that I don't wanna see us doing is I do not want our principals to be fearful to come and make their presentations to us, that we are going to sit there and just grill them. Because we just said accountability, you're asking us to step up and be accountable and asking. But I don't want it to be detrimental, that I want this to be, that we are all in this, what we can learn and how we can, how we can go forward. And if we're just grilling, when we weren't the principal there, and why were your scores this way, that went down this way, that solves nothing.
Right. Right.
That solves nothing. So going forward tonight, we can still have some, but we still have a whole bunch of more information here. We're gonna come up with metrics, we're gonna come up with what we want. We're gonna come up with either a task force or existing committee's gonna take it on and we're gonna come back to it.
Okay, awesome. Go forward to it, right?
So talk to all of us here at our planning committee.
No, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna figure this out, we're gonna figure this out. We're gonna figure this out. Thank you. Okay. Stay with us, you want me to die?
Thank you.
Do you need a stretch? How are you?
This is really
I'm actually excited.
You're doing this for yourself?
Yes.
No support.
No support. There's a lot of them.
Okay, go ahead, Ken.
All right, good afternoon. And I'm really excited, not only that we have a conversation about middle school schedules, but I'm excited after many years of waiting and hoping and working hard that we are on the verge of really doing some important work at the middle school level. It is really important to look at our, our goal, our aspiration. It shouldn't matter where you live, whether or not you can access an academically rigorous experience or not, or you can have a wide range of electives or not. And I want to talk a little bit about our charge and our mission is that when we open a ninth middle school, we will no longer have the variation that we have in academic program. We will no longer have the variation we have in terms of the student autonomy and choice about their academic aspirations. And, and so in order for us to understand that vision, we need to understand how did we get here? And we got here, I don't believe because anybody wanted kids to have less academics or to have more time in math at one school and less in another. We got here because we have a system with two variables at play. One is that we empower the local communities to make decisions. And then we had a resource situation where when left to make tough choices about economics and delivering academics, a lot of those were seen as made at the side table and they were made to do their very best in the systems of the world. And so we have varied programs. And I think that really inspires us to, to really have a clear academic vision for our kids, for our schools on the one hand, but also to really to push for funding that will no longer put people into situations where they have to make tough choices. There are some ways that we move forward with middle school schedules that maybe cost neutral or even savings. There's others that are gonna require further investment. And as we have been exploring those for the last six years, it has been important for us to keep in mind that we put kids first. And that students in middle school deserve to have an academic experience that really prepares them for success, but also takes care of them as kids, that they should not be just marking time, waiting for ninth grade to get electives. They should not be dreading going to class or to have an experience where they're led to believe that middle school doesn't matter and it really starts to count in high school. So we're talking about support not only for academic experience, but for a cultural experience that is rich in the middle school level. I want to go back a little bit more over the five-year process. I remember in 2014 of being asked or invited to join a committee so we could look at the middle school experience. And what I remember is we had kids in the room and some of those kids are juniors and seniors in high school now or they graduated. We had parents, we had teachers, we rolled up our sleeves and we got to work. And what I still remember is the overwhelming voice of students that said, give me choices. Right now I don't have choices, that was really loud and clear. And, and that they were really aspiring to, to have some fun in middle school. The idea of exploration versus everything being serious and academic. Those were two parts that really, really came through loud and clear. Over the, over the course of that year, that group came up with a list of courses that we thought should be part of a middle school experience. And for most of our kids, they have those courses, but they may not have access to all right now. So the gap we have to go is from a vision to a reality. And the way we get there is to further clarify our vision and have the resources involved. So after years of analyzing schedules and waiting and hoping, this fall, it was very refreshing to have a sense of urgency brought to us by the superintendent and brought to us by our board. And it's clear that this matters to you. It matters to you to have an academic experience that we can be proud of. It matters to me as well. And it also, it was really clear that we needed to do some work to honor that past work. And the yardstick that was provided to us by the school board with the six objectives helped us to analyze that past work, to bring that work forward to the superintendent and his cabinet, to have their guidance on how we move forward. And in December, we did that. And so we are now in a time where we have worked from the past and we have some other ideas. And we're out engaging our, our teachers. We have a survey that's active with teachers until February 6th. We're seeing good participation and we're looking forward to seeing some guidance from them about their opinions. And then starting on the 6th until February 19th, engaging our families and having them participate in evenings where they can start a dialogue with their local school to better understand the opportunities out there and have their questions answered and participating in the survey that will guide the superintendents moving forward. So I wanted to kind of look over the big thing and set the table a little bit for our discussion. And I, I want to stress, I know that middle school leaders are eager to, to move forward and to support kids and to support families. And we're looking forward to having some, some motion on that this period.
Okay, questions? Ken, thank you so much for being here. I have a question regarding, I know as you've been working on this, not all the principals have a read on, or something enough in terms of scheduling. So as you have meetings with parents from those particular different schools and the principals are guiding things a certain way, is there a way of giving, I don't know, a background so it's not skewed a certain way, is that you're getting the same kind of opinions you have in your discussions with your principals happening with the parents because they're, you know, getting, essentially from a principal who may not necessarily agree with the way things are.
Right. I would say that middle school principals share a vision about what they want for students. And what happens is that they're running out of resources before they can deliver on that, which means that they are choosing which of those values they can deliver on and maybe letting something, something go. So I know that we have a common commitment that kids have to be powerful at reading and writing in middle school if they're gonna be on track at grade nine. What we predict is if your achievement in language arts or communities is weak in middle school, you're gonna struggle to produce high-quality work in grade nine and you're gonna be the student that has Ds and Fs. So the foundation of literacy is non-negotiable, I would, I would say for, for our principals. In addition, we understand mathematics is critical. It's the gatekeeper between getting out with just a diploma and actually having agency to be able to choose to serve the military well, to get to trade school, to go on to college. That rigorous math is, is much more needed than ever. I think that middle school principals agree that teaming or having a smaller group of kids be known by adults that have those kids in common and creating structures for them to be, to have their progress monitored is something that's critical and we're all on board with that. And then again, I think a lot of times where things end up coming and going has to do with electives. That in order to balance the budget, that many times we have hard choices. And the kids at one school may have lots of choices in terms of slots in their schedule and at another school, not so many slots. And then which courses are actually available to fill those slots? We have local-based decisions. I think that's the greatest variation and where we really appreciated the clarity of the school board objectives to help us maintain our focus on our core values that we share, but to also understand that all, the entire experience actually has to be part of this system.
Actually, a question for the board members who are on the subcommittee that's been working on this. From the report, which I appreciated the update, it was unclear to me what we see as next steps in this process. I didn't see the either to proposals or no.
Right.
And I'm assuming there's a lot of stakeholders who have a lot to say on this, so I just, and I also know forecasting is probably happening next week. So I was just kind of curious what we see as next step.
We've already, really, the work's been
I've heard it's done, but I couldn't tell.
Well, because they're pointing at, pointing at it sliding on this person.
Yeah, I mean, so at this point, there are four schedules that have been proposed. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see those.
They must be in an email with teacher's cycle attachments, but not in the packet.
And there are some, there's the board priorities, which I think you've seen those in the past board packet. There are also some principal priorities that were put forward to in terms of like minutes of instructional time. And those four schedules were created out of those two groups of needs. And to kind of shorthand it, it was something like 60 minutes a day for math, but that could be doled out, you know, in different, some of the schedules will have like a shorter math period one day, a longer math period the next day, but you get to that average of 60 minutes or more. They were looking for 85 minutes of instruction in the communities and you'll see that in the schedules as well. The thing that we focused on as the planning committee, and this is important from an equity perspective, is that all of our students who are sped identified, avid, or required an intervention, and I should say students who are single identified, because it's much more difficult to get to the bar of dual identified. We basically, we don't see a way forward on that. We wish we could see a way forward on that, that's incredibly important. But that our students who are single identified would be able to take a single year-long elective of their choosing. And so the schedules take all, took all that input that was basically created over the fall. And now it's going out in front of the teachers. So the teachers have an opportunity to look at the schedules, get input. It'll be going out in front of the community. And then it's up to the superintendent to synthesize all of that information, all of that data, and then basically say, okay, you know, we're gonna do this schedule or we're gonna do this schedule, we're gonna modify it or, you know, whatever direction that Don C said, I'm not trying in any way to.
I'll make everybody happy.
Right, exactly. So it's, it's, it's a matter of taking a really, really good rough draft of everything that a lot of people have spent a lot of time preparing and then coming to that final decision. And I think what's so strong about our work, and I really want to highlight the work that Ked and Jenny have done on this, is that they've given some really quality options. So when people are looking at those four options, you're not necessarily looking at one schedule with tiny variations, you're looking at four different schedules. Then the, the other big thing I would say that's hanging over this too is the budget ask. And that depends not just on the schedule, but on the staffing and the amount of planned time versus the amount of instructional time that we're gonna be expecting for staff in each of those different models. And those will all have a different budget amount. And how does that move forward through the budget process? And what decisions are made are gonna be probably one of the most key elements that we have to take a look at in this point in the process.
We also went back and forth as to timing of this, when we're gonna do it, that was like a key thing. And that's still up in the air and we kind of like, there's pros and cons in implementing it in the fall versus waiting another year. And I don't think that we really settled on anything, but we had a great discussion about it.
So I think there's a little bit of confusion there. And that is, it's not the job of this board to tell the middle school administrator or exactly, they're in charge of operations. The job of this planning committee, along with the committee that was working internally, was working side by side. So that, so it probably should have been in this packet that it was sent to all of us in an attachment that is being sent to, so that all of us were aware of what was being presented to our families. And what's, nothing is for sure and it is not the job of this board to tell exactly the superintendent or teaching and learning exactly, this is the scheduled impact for job. That is not, that is not the job. So it was, it was taking this information, taking the objectives and the values which, and then once you come back to us with, this is what our teacher survey said, this is what our family engagement says, then something will be presented to the superintendent and then we will be, just like we do with the formal adoption of, of that. So it was not the job of either one to us to sit. And the same thing with implementation, all those things are still, still up there.
I have a clarifying question. Because I had a teacher that asked me to meet with him last, was it last week or two of his springings, huh? But, you know, expectations, okay, you're having to do your survey. Is there an explanation of the process to our parents and our teachers? So that they understand that, okay, here are the results, you know, so it's transparent. Or, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that it's not transparent, I don't get me wrong there. But, you know, so here the teachers are taking the time to fill out the survey to see the results of the survey, it would be one day. And to, to, so that they, there's also an understanding that that's part of it, but then there's also the family input. And then there, again, that question I asked about, well, principals have a certain kind of, I mean, anyway, okay, so there's that. And then of course, the ultimate decision is up to, you know, whatever you recommend to Don.
So I'll take a stab at it, Don, and then you can help me.
Yeah, I just want to do a little bit of follow-up. We have two principals in here and talk a little bit about our previous discussion and your expectations of the board and how choosing a schedule is not gonna, may not coincide with what we're hearing. It's, it's complex, but I'll let you go first.
I think if we're talking about engagement with our staff and community, then it would be silly for us to ask for their input and then not share the results of their input back. That, that, that just creates all sorts of illusions and trust is broken. So what's really critical is that we plan to share that, that feedback with them. It would be lovely, but my experience over the last six years is we're not gonna find that every stakeholder has a shared vision of what they aspire to. We're gonna probably have some confounding data. It's possible that they're gonna say, I really want this and then I want something else that's mutually exclusive. If I get that and I want you to do both, then we're gonna have to be able to come back and say, you told us you wanted this, you also told us you wanted something diametrically opposed. Using the guiding principles from the school board or our own clarity brought to us by middle school principals, we have made a decision to move this way, which is consistent with your viewpoint, and it's different than this. And here's how we're gonna adjust to bring ourselves more closely to this. So that's our intention. I'll be working close with the superintendent to make sure that whatever we have as a decision, the communication of that decision is almost as critical as the decision itself. And I'm very, very conscious of the fact, too many people work too hard for too long for us to not be thoughtful about our implementation and our communication. And I, and I go back to, the students deserve for us to have a transition that is thoughtful, that minimizes a negative impact on them and their families, and also supports their teachers being effective with any new structures. Having navigated radical shifts in staffing in the past, it is, if you don't have happy kids and you don't have happy teachers, it is not fun to lead a building. So we all understand that we need to be able to articulate what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we're gonna support people that have concerns and that we're really thoughtful.
Why doesn't it actually do a long-term period and it, it's a follow-up to as a district, especially at the middle school level, maybe secondary, we have had a few times, at least in institutional memory, where we can remember saying, you know what? We're not gonna offer X anymore.
Right.
And I, so I was just wondering what learnings we had from that that might help in the alignment effort that we're going to do here. I mean, I recall that those were hard.
Right. I think from my experience, that the closer the communication is to the person that has the concern and they're closer to, that that person can actually articulate why. And it's more than just because somebody said so, and the better. Because if our, if our rationale can go back to students and their experience, I think that we have more people that are willing to make those changes. If it seems like it is due to a lack of resources and that's If it seems like it is due to a lack of resources and that's the only reason, that is a resume with people. But when we can say, our students deserve to emerge from middle school well-prepared to take whatever track of learning they want. And right now, we don't necessarily have that realist experience. And so in order to do that, we need to make the following changes. That narrative is actually one that resonates. And it's true, right?
If I, I want to add something too, if I understand your question, Ryan. Which is, you're just talking about, well, you have shifts in a single building across the system.
Well, or even sometimes if we're trying to bring all buildings to the same, you know, we're not gonna...
Yeah.
The thing I remember is that we're not doing German anymore.
That's, that was, that's what was brought up, that's what was brought up another board. That's a kind of, I was trying to get away from, I guess, in the past, and I don't know how long ago in the past, but it was brought up several times in the meetings, there have been boards that said, you will have a foreign language. And so it was up to the building to make that work, what that foreign language be, what that, and then they eventually died out. So they've been used to board saying, you will have this. And that's not what this discussion was about, that you will have this. It was more that we had experienced that our different buildings had different, within our own district, and that it needed to be more in alignment with what. And so it's taken five years of discussion.
Right.
And then it's, it was the protocol to take, to do that. Did you go out and ask all the teachers what they wanted first, and then build it from there? Or did you, so instead it was, the protocol was taken, have an internal that went to the principals that then... And now it's all coming to be. But it's, for as much discussion as there was, people being aware that this is happening has really only been in the last few months. So it feels like it's coming very fast and furious, only again, to us, it's been a discussion that's been going on quite a while.
I wanted to clarify something about Anne's question, because one of the board priorities was that it's a common experience with common offerings, and that those are only changed centrally. So what you're not doing is you're changing one thing in one school, or one changing another thing in another school. If we, as a district, and this is an imperative of the school board, but is the administration makes a decision to move from one offering to another, that's absolutely, can happen, but it won't be happening in a building.
Right, I think, Tom, what you're saying, that how I have experienced that, is sometimes in the past, because of the need to be creative because of the lack of resources, or to honor the desire to be innovative, we have developed programs that can't be replicated from campus to campus. And so we have to be thoughtful about how do we continue to support innovation and support local investment in schools, but to have a clear vision of the academic coursework that we're gonna have. I think we can do that. And I also think that one thing that I want to really reiterate, it is sometimes tempting as a building principal to want to be competitive. We want to have the best outcomes from our kids, we want to have the very best staff. And one thing I do appreciate about the leadership at the middle school level is we define our, our value as a level with the success of all. That we are invested, that when we have high expulsion rates at one school, I have experienced where principals say that is our problem. And they're looking at data, and they're coming together and saying, we will fix this together. That's not always true. I've worked in levels and systems where that's not the case, and we define our excellence because at least we're better than the school down the road. But there is a shared commitment, the stumbling block has been, because we have not had the resources and because we haven't had clarity and people are randomly trying to get to that shared vision, it's been harder to get there. And I think that is a critical moment. And so when I, when I hear things about the timing, timing is important. We want to be thoughtful about the timing because this is our one shot. And if it means that we are at a place where we have clarity, and our input is consistent, and we can do that well by fall, we will do that well by fall. And if we have clarity, but our implementation is gonna be longer, then I feel comfortable that the superintendent's gonna listen to my counsel, because the ultimate thing is, the rich students deserve a middle school experience that is consistent, but the implementation must be done well. Our staff deserves that as well.
Go ahead, I'll take it.
I know you were trying to help me understand Tom, but I didn't understand anything. What you were saying at all? Were you trying to say that if we decide we're gonna add industrial arts, we're adding it to all schools? And if we decide that drama's not our focus, then we're gonna take it away from some? That's what I thought, but it's something that helps to put it out there.
So as you, as you can see, it's a complex issue, some of the things that you're asking. First thing I want to do, I want to thank Tom, Donna, and other folks that are there on this committee and go on. And especially, I see two of them back there are middle school principals who have been there. This is a complex issue, I'll go back to some of the things that they struggled with, has to do with. We just had a pretty intense section on accountability regarding academics, specifically in the area of language arts and mathematics. So we're trying to counter that with, we want to serve the whole chat. So I would say the majority of our principals are saying, you're giving up, you're asking us, you're wanting accountability for increasing academic achievement in some of these core areas. And at the same time, we're saying we want to increase electives for students. And so we're gonna be, if we're going to do that, we're gonna be taking away academic instructional time around those core subjects that are measured by our state. You mentioned smarter balance. We're gonna have smarter balance in Oregon for the next five years. It's here, it's gonna stay, it's not going away. And that's what they're measuring schools on. So that's one of the areas, that's one of the areas that I think folks are struggling with. The other part is, whatever schedule we come up with, we're making sure that we are meeting the contractual obligations specifically with our teachers' contract. Now, can that be changed? Yes, it could be changed, but that'd be a bargaining item, we didn't have to bargain that. So we have planned time obligations that we have to meet. We also have instructional minute times that we have to meet regarding mandates from the Department of Education. So if you're changing some schedules, just for example, you're going to a seven-period schedule, you're gonna have more pass times, that's gonna come off, that's gonna come off. So those are something to consider. Something also that we're considering is our budget. As we put together a budget with the Student Success Act right now currently, and knowing that we're trying to right-size this year, and looking at those different schedules. Those schedules have, and they have a $4 million swing in them. Depending on a schedule, we could save $2 million. Depending on another schedule, we could add $2 million. So there's a financial part to that. Humanities part is a huge issue. I would probably say, if, you correct me if I'm wrong, if you ask the majority of humanities teachers, they would say we really need to move away with separating those, having a language arts class, social science class. Especially with the, now the new onboarding of, Pat talked about it, the new onboarding is the social science standards that are coming in. Also hearing people that we don't believe, you know, our students know enough, all the way from geography to civic engagement to history, and so looking at that. If you separate those classes, that adds into the picture of an additional class that you have to do. We know that we have a mandate for physical education, 225 minutes on an average per week. The other thing, if we decide to go to one of these schedules, it could have licensure implications, could have staffing implications. If we happen to split the humanities, or if we're going to be requiring, if we're going to be adding more electives, we could actually be cutting staff in core, adding elective teachers. So depending on the schedule we pick, that could have some definite implications. So those are just a few of the moving parts. Our goal was definitely to have this implemented so we could start next school year, we're off and running. So that is our, that is the goal, but also knowing, Ken talked about, we just definitely don't want to do something and we're gonna have to go back and fix it. So I'm looking, is the timing right? Not knowing some of these, this is what I'm considering, not knowing some of these other budget implications, would it be better to wait? Or do we just, we've been kicking this can down the road for a long time. And, but would it be better to kick it down for a little bit more? So we have some known variables that are out there to be able to find out if we're gonna pick a schedule that needs a $2 million investment, or a million dollar investment, that we know what we're dealing with. For the board members to know, on per pupil, per student, we pay, we spend less on middle school kids than we spend on our elementary or our high school students. So those are some of the things that are going through my mind. Yes, I will make a decision and, you know. So we have, we have union issues to deal with. We also, we have special interest groups out there that want to see some equity across the board for students, whether it's, should every student have access to some sort of fine arts program? Whether that require a band opportunity? And should they be able to take that every day, have an everyday experience with that opportunity? Also trying to deal with, it was spoke, and we just can't. If a student is dual-identified, if they're, if they're needing, if they're an emerging language, English language student, and/or they're also identified in special education, and/or even some other, other things. Trying to make sure that that student has the same amount of opportunities, it's almost impossible. I would say it is impossible. They're not gonna have that. And then also making sure, what are those interventions for all of our students gonna look like that just require special help? Whether it's students of poverty, English language learners, trying to address some of the race issues that you brought up, Donna. So those are all, they're all coming in, into play and trying to balance that, balance that. But I think, Ken, I think the principals have worked hard, planning committees have worked hard, but it's, it's not as easy, and it's, I have just equated to middle school boundaries. Depending on what side of the fence you lie on is probably where your passion is.
So, next steps?
Next steps is that we have the staff survey closing on the sixth, and that feedback will be made available to the superintendent, and we will begin to parse that and look at various scenarios. Simultaneously, we'll be engaging with our, on February 6th at 6:30, we have sessions in each of our neighborhood middle schools to engage families and start a conversation. And then their feedback, the survey closes on February 19th. It's our hope, hopefully, that by late February, early March, we start to see the development of some next steps that is firmer. And then we have a communication that's going out of the superintendent's office to inform the board and our community and our families of where we're going and when we're going to that.
The other part I just want the board to be aware of, as you know, when Timberland comes on, there's, there will be some staffing changes, there will be some people transferred, depending on this middle school schedule, or there will be some folks also transferred from schools to schools. So do we do it a little bit at a time, or do you wait and try to do it all at once again? Those are, those are some of the issues, and people have made the case for, on each side.
So, just so again, so the board knows expectations, the, you're more than welcome. It's on our BSD briefs, you're more than welcome. If you want to observe your local middle school, if you want to go to the meeting this Sunday, Thursday, they're all gonna be open at the same time. It's not, it's not a requirement. Again, just so, we take in information in public. I think what's really important here, and we can go back and we can even have this read by the end of the meeting, is for the board to feel comfortable with the why, and why this is something that we as a board have been focused on, so that we can share that with, if someone in our community were to ask us. But if you are there on Thursday to observe, to make it really clear that it's not just you as a board member that are going to be deciding whether or not there's humanities, and that's not something, that is something that will come back and be discussed, but ultimately will land with the superintendent and teacher, to generally, so...
Are people getting phone calls or other reminders? How are middle school families getting the notice, or maybe fifth grade students?
Can you help me out with this? So we did a school messenger, but...
Yes, so the kind of school messenger that went out last week to all of our elementary and middle school families, we got it translated into English. We'll be doing another reminder tomorrow. And we are actually going to be live streaming from one of the schools at Comstocka, so that if a parent doesn't, isn't able to attend, they can still hear what parents are hearing in. And the principals all have the scene, have presentation, and just, so they will get a lot of the same information.
There's also, there's also a webpage with a lot of information, because we know not everybody can be with us. The presentation will be posted there once it's finalized. And in addition, anybody that visits that webpage will be able to participate in the survey. So the beauty is that we hope people come to us and that we can engage in conversation, but if people can't join us, they need to have a voice as well.
Getting a hand of a voice, it's so often, it's a certain socioeconomic group that tends to go to these meetings. How are we reaching out to those families that wouldn't typically even be aware of a schedule change, even though it's been communicated?
I know that many of the principals are actively trying to work with their community to personally invite people, to also work with their bilingual community liaison, for example, to bring people in, to range for translation, to be willing to do this same presentation with smaller groups, if that's what it takes, to do alternate times of day. And just to really support people who have not traditionally been involved, but also people that have a, I think everybody can get together with, we all care about our kids, and we want them to have strong choices, so.
So what does the board need? Ken, I know you can get, I know we sent it out to everybody, but we can have hard copies today of what the principals are gonna be presenting, and what the, what the different schedules are that they're looking at.
Right, I would say that I have the draft of what principals are presenting, but we're, we're making sure that our principals have absolutely the most accessible, and the information's good. So just know it's a draft today. And it'll be, it'll be put in firm, firm by tomorrow.
I think if you go to our website and you type in common middle school experience, you'll find a series of dropdowns and on it are the four schedules.
Correct.
So it's, it's on our website.
And not to put our middle school principals on the spot, but since you are here, and we are here, is there anything that you would like to add to this conversation that you think we as a board can do?
I just think it's, I want to be clear that we, as a group of eight, have been very aligned, and we are in agreement on our priorities. And we all would have liked to have had a common schedule, but we are unable to do that because of how we're stacked. The APU is determined by your enrollment, and you get a little bit extra if you're free and reduced, and you don't. And so there have been schools that wanted to have a schedule aligned with the rest of us, but were unable to do so, and ran more of a junior high kind of schedule, and not a teenage schedule, because we all see that as a priority to really support students. So I just want you to know that we have been talking about this for years, and we, I feel like we are aligned.
I would add that we all realize just how very, very complex it is. There's no silver bullet. And you know not everybody's gonna be happy, but yes, we are aligned. And because we work with middle school students and understand all the challenges they go through for three years, we are acutely aware that it is often the electives that bring them the joy in their day. But the foundation of what we do is making sure they're prepared for high school. That is our number one responsibility. Because as you know, if a student is behind in credit by... Because as you know, if a student is behind in credit by the end of their ninth grade year, they are much more likely to not graduate. And that is a direct correlation to what we send them away with in eighth grade.
This is going to be a little basic question, but I'm not familiar with you and I was just wondering what you.
I'm self-familiar with you. You don't know. I'm Shannon Anderson, I'm the principal of Cedar Park.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. I know I've met you at many points, but obviously it'll be refreshing, thank you.
Thank you, I know, which I was, so thank you very much for.
This is our passion.
It's not different than what we've been hearing from your executive administrator or from superintendent. We know this is very complex and that's why it's very easy to, so, so thank you. And we don't, you've got, you take your business very seriously of getting our students ready for high school and we appreciate that.
So my question is, when will we hear next? Will we hear a report before it goes to the superintendent? Will we hear it after it goes to the superintendent? Just what's our expectation?
It will, this information in February will come back to the planning committee and then we'll probably have something at our March board meeting that will, then, and then it'll be.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, just good, just good to know. I know it's not our decision and I want to honor that, but it would be great to know how it's progressing and what's going on.
So the next six, all the surveys and.
Which, which I just got to add too, so as we, as we put this back, got a nervous HR director up here in the background because we're getting ready to staff everything up too. There's staffing, it's, there's staffing timelines that need to take place. It's, it's a, it's very complex.
We want you to know, we, we understand that. We know this is not just a silo and it's one size fits all and just turn it and it all fits, we realize that, we realize that.
I really appreciate your understanding of how important the role is because it doesn't really matter what the decision is in the, I mean, it will, but if it's not done well, even if it's the best decision and the best thing, we all know it's going to go down. So, thank you for being careful.
Thank you.
All right?
All right.
You're off the line. So can you, do you want to get that or do you want to just?
I think so.
She will, she will.
She's going to do an interpretive dance and pretend like she's walking us through the.
We have two hundred pictures.
Um.
Oh. You think come over. It's better in person.
So thank you so much for the chance. We're sorry to be on the.
So, so that's going to force us to sleep?
No, I just have a pulse.
But, and we know you're not going to go forward.
Not now, you should hold that too.
You've always done that with us. But just if, if you, if there's something you want to share with us and then if we, you know, ask a couple of questions.
So it's been, it's been a really stressful year, but it's been a really rewarding year. We, bringing Rachel Carson back has been with lots of challenges. And I, if anybody asks me, should we do occupancy renovation, I would say no. It's really, really hard on staff and students. Everybody's been great. People move when they have to mid-year, all of those kinds of things. People are living out of boxes, new building is beautiful, but it's been, it's been hard and it's been for a long period of time. It's been for three to four years. So there's been lots of changes. It has been good in that people have courage, they're stuck. And so because teachers have a tendency to be pack around. We've noticed things like it's noisier because of the concrete. But I think we're getting to a good place overall. We see improvements, but we, I, we as all schools have really seen increasingly behaviors in kids. And there's a lot of, we have a lot of trauma kids. We had two, we did do two student threat assessments today and, and also a sexual violence report, all in one day. And two of those students are both foster children. Both of, both those were foster children who, one of them is also already involved with juvenile. So those are the kinds of kids that we end up with at Five Oaks. And I think our staff does an incredible job with these people. I, I really feel like as we start to look at the boundary changes and how our demographics will change, I think that will be a big change for Five Oaks also. We, we still are on that extended time schedule, so we start really early and we go until almost four o'clock. And that's been, that's hard on people. But kids are, kids are making progress, teachers are doing a great job. I really feel proud to have been there for as long as I have. It's going to be hard when I leave our job because I'm not going to beg for anything, but I'll do that housework time. But I, I really would love for you to see the building and to also see the incredible instructions happening in the foster time. You know, I'm sure every middle school principal says this, but I really feel like we have the best needs for staff. These people stay there because of the communities and I appreciate that and I know the parents do this. Questions?
Last question, I was just curious how that transition was going with Rachel Parsons because you know they came and spoke there.
Yep.
So it's good to get that.
It's still hard. The, and it's hard for kids. So a third of our kids were there when Rachel Carson was there before, two thirds were not. Because of resources, we have had to reduce PE encore staffing, which also means that we have some halftime teachers that are there either on A day or a B day. So when you have to move kids, you don't have the flexibility that you did before. Okay, so, so this, this period doesn't really work. Well, how about we try it on the, on the B day? Well, that person's not there on B day. So it's been hard. I don't, I still think that there are some Rachel Carson parents, they're still not happy. But I have Rachel Carson parents tell me all the time, they like what's happening, they feel like their kids, it helps their resiliency. We're, we're planning an event between Rachel Carson and Five Oaks on April 23rd at their fun night. We have parents from both, both programs that want to, want to help them. So I feel like everybody's trying to work towards an end goal to be more of a, of a staff together. So what's that going to mean with boundaries? And is enrollment changes, is Rachel Carson going to still be there? Who knows? We'll wait and see, but we're going to, we're going to continue forward and we're going to do some work over the next months with all the staffs together on those staff development days because it's really important to me for me to leave the school for the next principal with really positive, forward minded.
Last question, thank you so much for being in the district for so long and doing amazing things. So my question is, and this is just kind of from the parents being through that night, the comment about where the Rachel Carson students are and that they can, like there's windows into their classrooms?
There's not windows into their classrooms, but they are in the center.
Okay.
So before, we were trying to figure it out, before their classrooms are a little bit isolated. They were at ends of the building where there wasn't kids walking by and so it's different. The reason I put them in the center is because that way they were in just one part of the building, coming in at seven o'clock in the morning. They would be adjacent to the counselors, they'd be adjacent to the library and this remodel, I only got four science labs. The two biggest science labs are in that center area with a huge work area in the middle. So I thought, oh, what a great place to have them. And there would be, there were enough classrooms for all, all six teachers to be there and to also be close to counselors and libraries, I said, and restrooms. Well, that didn't go as smoothly as I.
How's it going now?
It's going better. I, I still think we have a lot of work to do. I, I think it's stressful because teachers are having to interact with kids who are not their students because it's, they're kind of in the middle of everything. I, I believe it's caused us stress. They, they work hard in those passing times and they work hard with their kids in the classroom, but they don't see those behaviors in the classroom when Five Oaks teachers see those behaviors inside and outside of the classroom. And so I, I think they're an incredible group of six teachers. I think they're very skilled, they're very good. But we have some kids with some real, with some real large needs and we don't have the same support from families that those kids that are in Rachel Carson, that those teachers have from those families. Because it's an options program. We get completely demographic, we get completely different level of support. You know, I'm working with foster, with foster kids and parents who are incarcerated and all of that, well, you don't see that same level to the, to the same percentage as you, as you Rachel Carson.
So I'll go back to that. So the theater schools that go into Five Oaks, is there an encouragement for the, at the grade level to be applying for the Rachel Carson? And do you have many of the theater elementary schools going to Rachel Carson because that would help them?
There are some, there are some, but I don't know what percent. You could look at, if you looked at the boundary maps, it will show you on there how many of those kids come from which, from which elementaries. We seem to have a big concentration of those kids that would be going to see her part for whatever reason or to, or to stole, or just stole her. You know, years ago, we used to do family nights. We did those, my own in rumor, we recall. And we actually did one on a Saturday afternoon for ESL parents. And it was well, it, it was well attended, we had lots of interpreters. Without doing that and just doing the ones within the school, the open houses in the school, you don't get the same level of participation at those things. And so I think that may have some difference. Those are in the evening, we have a couple, but I used to get quite a few kids from the ESL night or afternoon, so, yes.
Yes, so I just want to thank you for your service. So I just have two questions. Do we know who's going to take your place yet? Responsible for John?
I'm waiting early this week.
Okay. And then the second one is, I just know after talking to some of the parents that are over in the Bethany area about the middle school boundary shifting. What are we doing as far as marketing Five Oaks as being a warm and welcoming place for middle school students from, from, that they, that might be going there? And do we have a plan for welcoming them? Because you know, in the high school level, when we went through the whole boundary thing, there was a major program that each of the high schools did. I know Aloha did, for example, to where they have like orientation for the parents and the kids. And the students really did their part in welcoming the new students. So their integration would be easy. And I know it went pretty well at Aloha and I think it went pretty well at all the other schools too. There was a major program. So what's happening on the middle school level, do you know? For integrating those kids that are going to have to transfer now over to Five Oaks?
Well, and, and I think everything's still kind of in the maybe stages. We are hoping that our family fun night, we're going to invite the community to come to that also. We tried to do some welcoming things around fifth grade parent night, but that's so early and that's before this whole process really started. I mean, you make a really good point about what are some of the things that we can do.
Planning.
Yeah, planning to do. And I really think that there's, we're not the only school where people are like wondering. And so I'm kind of seeing about, maybe we as, as, as schools need to do some family nights for parents to come in and see the schools because I, I don't think you can go wrong at any of the middle schools in the district. And so there's, there's all these false impressions about what schools are like, but I think that's a really good point. And I'm, we've been texting everybody and saying, I'm glad I really.
Yes, I was hoping that that would work because I know in talking to some of the parents, I was saying, hey, maybe we got it all wrong, we need to go visit. So.
I think we need to have like, they happen after the decision was made.
Decision needs to be.
Yeah, I know, so please admit, but I mean, they're, they were planning before, while they were making the decision, there's a lot of planning that goes into.
No, they, they hit a whole year of planning.
I know, but they don't have as much.
Yeah, they do.
We do.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, we, it's not going to be for next year.
Oh, that's true, okay.
So I'll leave that to a new principal.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. But I'm, so no, but I think it's a good idea to do something this spring at the schools because the decision, the decision will have been made. And then the fall of the school year, there could be some other, are they, is it not going to be made?
So I would guess.
The recommendation will go to the board.
Okay, I get it.
So I think that's, that's some, that's a good idea to do something this spring and then to do some, some visits in the, in the home.
Because you know, there are some of our parents that are really gung ho and they'll be more aggressive and going out and checking out the schools.
That's right.
Yeah, I do think it's important that we get that message out, however, that you can't go wrong.
You can't go wrong.
And our middle schools are just phenomenal.
You're going to have a common middle school.
That's right.
Yeah. And I think that's been a big deal, honestly, because it's been different in different schools, what we've been able to offer according to our staffing or, and now that our priorities have always been aligned, but now it's really clear that our priorities are aligned and we're all going at the same kind of opportunities for kids. So I think there's really, that's a really good point.
Is there anything the board can do to help support staff really quickly? I would think it will feel maybe even more manly. Like I, that makes sense, so something's going to change at Five Oaks.
Right, something's going to change in every school. I don't know, that's a really good question. I, let me ask my seven friends and see what, what you can do to support us. You know, we feel support by the board, but I, maybe something more overt, I don't know.
It's a good question. So Shirley's kind of tagging along with, you know, the changes in schedule. I know you have a meeting coming up this week. Do you anticipate a lot of people attending?
No, I don't. I usually don't have a lot. But I think I'm going to do those after, even after the decision's made. I'm going to do some more parent nights to have them understand. And that way too, that I can have different languages there also.
Is it to the hope that you don't get a big?
Not really. A lot of my parents, honestly, were. Had two and three dogs and some little kids at home and so I don't get the turnout at those schools.
Are you going to, I think there's a survey that's associated with it, are you going to be pushing the survey out? Do you have a good response rate for you now with those parents from work at night or is it the same issue?
It's about the same issue. We really, and you have to really make sure that whatever you put out there, that it's easily read on a phone versus a computer.
Got it.
Because everybody has a smart phone, not everybody has a computer.
I think we sometimes forget that, just like any information anywhere now, you know, my daughter's saying that people don't need to go to high school reunions anymore because you know everything about someone between Facebook and Snapchat and Instagram and all these kind of things. This is the same thing, we used to have, the only way parents really got to engage with, with our schools was, was going to the, now we have so many different mechanisms. So when we hold these meetings, unless they feel like they really have something skin in the game about something that they want to, they, they have the information and if they want to say something to someone, they're, they're, but I, I, I think between whether it be people have jobs or activities or whatever, we give more information than we ever did when, you know, so.
Well, and that being said, parent conferences, we always get a ton of people.
Because that's about your own kid.
Right. Back to school night, we always have a really great turnout. I have no complaints about any of that. And we always feel support from parents, but yeah, for a, a meeting, I mean, PTO, I have about 15 people this year that are PTO. That's the most I've ever had. So. So people are super busy, but I do I do agree, they can get the information other ways. And we try and we do a weekly update on our website. We have construction update and a school update every week. So that I make sure that, you know, we are communicating with parents, especially around the construction. The best of you is supposed to be working on Wednesday. Yeah, so I'm super excited about that.
My mom was on, she taught at Five Oaks. So there was something assignment like thirty four years of BSD science teacher. She's at Five Oaks, but she says it might have been the most rewarding because you know, obviously you have a lot of it's social economic, it's harder. But she felt that it was a school where you can make the biggest impact in people's lives.
Absolutely.
So that connection between the teacher and the student meant a lot to them, more than some of the school people you might have at some side or other schools. So she really enjoyed her time there. So congratulations on the title.
Yeah, thank you.
Is the is the community garden gonna be planted this spring?
The, yeah, yeah.
Still Rachel Carson run for the most part?
For the most part, but we're gonna start transitioning Five Oaks to 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 work in.
So would that community garden in some way be connected with the group bank that's?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask if we're new that it was.
Yeah, and they they're the ones who came to us and asked if they could plant a garden there.
That's nice.
It's beautiful, yeah.
And you if you go by there, it has amazing raised beds.
Also good business.
It's beautiful. And then your the students work on the outside, it's not pretty as well, right?
Yes, they will be down in the, I don't know, in the wetlands. Yes. But also, many of our kids also, teachers take kids to the Oregon Food Bank to volunteer there also. Our avid kids go there several times a year and so they pack up, you know, vegetables. So it's so it's a real collaborative with our school. It's been great.
Well, I'll mention to them that it's when they're doing that garden, they need some very inexpensive organic compost. We know a local business owner that probably has some extra.
Is that you? No, it's him, it's dogged day here.
It's called the stool zone.
I wouldn't want them on my bench.
No, me neither.
No.
It's not quite like chicken.
It's my.
Nice.
It smells delicious.
Always bringing connections. You never know about really, you gotta collaborate wherever you can.
So what role does it have for us for that equity gap? Because your school is gonna be funded.
No, I there was actually somebody sent me an article, it might have been Shannon. She sent me an article around equity and funding. And I will send it to you, Dawn, if you want to share it with the with the board. It was really interesting to me as you take a look at, are we really looking through a lens of equity when we take a look at finance in schools? And what do we need to do differently? It's really it's a really easy read, like New York Times.
Yeah. Was it about the PTOs?
Wasn't that interesting?
Was it about the PTOs?
Yeah.
Money that's spent from.
Yeah, depending on where you are, I think you're. No, it's it's it was really interesting. It was and I know that's a struggle that we have, we don't have a PTO. Our PTO is great and they're wonderful and super supportive, but we can't get the kind of fundraising to happen in our school.
So hopefully, as they do the new staffing allocation, we'll be putting in poverty back. So which will help our schools with higher poverty. But when that resources, more resources are going there, you know, we have finite resources. It it could be an impact on some of our hires. But that's one way to try to mitigate that.
Well, those poverty dollars really made a difference for me as far as staffing went, to be able to staff across that extended day. And when I lost that money, that's why I'm that's why I struggle right now with large class sizes, which I did get some a little bit of extra. But that's the struggle, I'm not having people there every single day to be able to spread those kids out. Because every grade, there's you know, there's a grade level and then there's an additional hundred kids of Rachel Carson. And so then you've got a mix of six, seven, and eight. And so that that PE encore with mixed grades is really, really difficult. And that's, I think that may happen also like in in buildings that have SUMA. But we're that's what we really felt is that it's trying to separate those six those little sixth grade kids, separate from an eighth grade group. And so and not having enough slots to put kids in. It's been a it's been a struggle, but we're making it work as best we can.
So that middle school's a lot harder now too. Kids are like dealing with like love issues more than nothing.
And social media is the root of all of them.
I agree.
Those are all it is. That is the hardest, and we deal with that almost every day. And and even when something happens at school, there's this long string that's happened over the weekend or in the evening and it's all on. And kids, you know, good or bad, they're videotaping every fight, every altercation, every and then sharing. And then you have to deal with it. Yes. Yeah. So I was glad my kids were in school and then had a flip phone. Didn't couldn't tape anything, couldn't. But it's it's hard for kids. And and also, parents are also probably that problem, that's for sure.
I think our theme so far this evening is everything is complex.
It is. So let me know, just email me if you want to come over and visit. And I'd love to have you see the building. It'll be done at the end of summer, everything should be completely finished. And they're gonna do the last, we're doing one more move here in March and then they'll be starting on another wing. It should be done by the end of summer. And then we'll pass it off.
Thank you again for the word of the trade.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming to us.
All part of the. Wouldn't have been able to do the math.
Thanks for the.
Yes.
Okay.
I ate my dinner.
All right, five minutes, five minutes.
Look at that. I like it.
It's a power color.
I like it. How did I, I did not know that.
They all laughed when he came up.
I have that effect on people. I show up, people leave the room.
Oh, board budget update.
Thank you, you ready to go?
We're ready to go.
So we're gonna talk a little bit about this year, the nineteen twenty school year. And talk about.
Nineteen twenty.
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Not the roaring twenties.
Which one?
And a little bit about next year. And talk a little bit about some ideas for hers. And then I'll tell you about next steps and kind of where we are in the process of budgeting. We are definitely under the gun and moving quite quickly. As you've noticed, you've gotten monthly updates on the board on the working budget. And you've seen we're down about four point one million dollars from that standpoint. And you know, we kind of have this disconnection of where we have what's going on with the working budget. But we also know that from month to month, our spending changes and moves and ebbs and flows. And so we'll make a projection on what we think we'll be in this school year with in terms of resources. And that's gonna have an impact. Right now, we're in the twenty to twenty five million dollar range. We want to see that number around twenty five million as as required by board policy. So we're working on that. I won't do a final projection on that until next month. So that gives us another month to kind of see how we're doing, see how resources are coming in. We got a state school fund update on Friday, took a look at it over the weekend. It's it's a mixed bag for us. Overall revenue's up a little, but I'm a little nervous about ADM. So we're working on all those things right now to kind of say, all right, how are we doing in nineteen twenty? What does that impact this in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one year? So I wanted you to know that in terms of what we're doing in the current year. And again, ADM, state school fund, how revenues are coming in and how our expenditures are. Is what we'll spend a good deal of time on this this month and first part of March. Does that make sense for nineteen twenty?
One question.
Two thousand nineteen.
I know you said here, since this may require additional reductions.
Yep.
Do we know how much that?
Yeah, I would mean, yes, yeah. So it could be as much as a few million if the if, you know, we're down to twenty two and we want to see it at twenty five. We'll be careful about that though, because it'd kind of be a one time reduction. This isn't an ongoing deal. We just want your reserves, you're getting reserves up around that twenty five million going into next year.
So we're already at eighteen in terms of deficits?
Yeah.
So if we add your name.
Yep, yep. I'm just letting you know, it could get a little larger. I'm I'm not hoping for that obviously, but we'll we'll watch it closely. So the fine, we won't make a final determination on our deficit until March.
You're talking the reserve, not the end of the game.
Correct, just yes, just general fund reserve thing.
So how much am I giving home myself?
Up to you.
Okay, so I guess I know that we're expecting Student Success Act fund. Because if we're starting at a deficit, does that mean that our overall budget is lower? Or is the potential of offsetting some of that in the Student Success Act fund?
You bet. In the as we look at two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, we kind of start talking about that. So we got an allocation for the state last week, week, two weeks ago, not? For the range of thirty two million dollars, I guess I think for us. And if we're in the deficit range of about eighteen million, net will be, you know, more dollars available in the two thousand twenty twenty one school year. So we should be at net positive.
Well, we could potentially be cutting in some areas and adding in other areas.
That's correct, that's correct. So we finished our listing and learning sessions, we did two of those in March, thank you for attending. We're we're doing the drafting and costing of the student investment account ideas. So they met last week, got some ideas together, we're starting to put some cost to those to say, well, what does that look like? We've also implemented, and I think, Dawn, you talked, I couldn't hear as well in the back, a little bit about the new staffing allocation model. There's a new model that that uses poverty as a as a factor. And we've got that, we've got our arms around that, we've got that model built. So we built that model and we're in this kind of, here was the old SAM where we thought we were in terms of reductions. Here's the new SAM. How do we get these things kind of in line from a cost structure before we get there as we get going with staffing for next year? So that's kind of where we are. Jenny and I and Jessica for the budget I spent last week started looking at SAM to say, is it doing what it's supposed to do? And generally speaking, it is. So what we're going to do, we're working on our, again, our cost center reductions for cabinet. We're gonna make those decisions tomorrow. Most of the rest of our reductions for the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year will come through SAM. But it's gonna be coming through the new SAM. So we'll be making some reductions there. Once we make those reductions, it'll be informative to the student investment account in terms of, you know, class size is one of the issues there. Mental health is a big piece of that. Some stuff we're already doing in those areas that we did look to move over to the student investment account. How all that plays out, we'll find out in the next, basically, the next few weeks, right? Because we kind of need to make those decisions, get those done so we can get the application for new goals.
If I if I can just interject for a minute, I don't want this to go by the board's wayside. So basically, we know we have this deficit. And so over the last month, month and a half, we've been meeting with every central office department and asking central office departments for further reductions. Because we know if we have to go out and make reductions anywhere else and be in our schools, we want to make sure that we are really taxing ourselves. And what I can tell you is, and I'll just say, if somebody comes to you and says, central offices, there's a lot of fluff there. What I'm gonna tell you, every one of our central office departments is going to be extremely weak. I mean, extremely weak. Way of running and we're cutting budgets and we're trying to get somewhere in the neighborhood of an additional four million dollars. I don't think we're gonna get to the four million dollars, hoping we're gonna at least get to the three million dollars. But what I want to tell you is, everything from the superintendent's office to the board budget, to teaching and learning, to operations, human resources. And we are having every director come in with their folks and representing, we're going through every line item. And they're presenting every line item to us and we're making those cuts. So what I can guarantee you is, what has, there there can be no more cut central office unless it's, we're we're gonna be really not being able to support our schools at all. We're gonna be, we're gonna be bare bones.
So I guess, so I know we don't know what's gonna happen with the contracts, but isn't that gonna potentially put a monkey wrench in all this?
Right. Yeah, yeah, we did, we did. Go in this, uh, before we have some further discussion about that.
Okay, okay.
I have a question about the first side account. The last thing I saw that was coming out of the first board basically said, they're not predicting any rate increases as long as the rate of return is at least five percent. And then what they were having is basically just like a roll off. I know there's a challenge obviously to Senate Bill ten forty nine, which is part of what maybe making that curve or a small part. I'm wondering, why would we, or is there, or maybe a better way of phrase is, is there a reason to invest in side accounts even if the person's rate is just gonna be a downward trend?
I think so. I think there's a case to be made for that because think about where we were, what, eighteen years ago when we issued the first pension bonds? And we said, once we issued these pension bonds, we're paid up, not gonna be a problem, we're out of debt. And then look at where we are, right? We're kind of right back where we were. I I think this will continue to be a long term problem. We kicked the can down, the legislation kicks the can down the road, adds more years to the payback. I just think there's some opportunity for a couple of bad years and we're back in the soup again. And Dawn, I actually think rates are gonna go down in twenty one, twenty three.
Okay.
We'll talk about that when we talk about creating a first reserve, not not taking that as rates fall, not just using that money and spending it on something else. I'm worried about whether or not that legislation will really be run out by the end in terms of, has the Oregon Supreme Court issued their verdict on where they think it is? And what are the implications of that? So regardless, we will likely suggest to you that we have some sort of a reserve now. To what, you know, to what extent and how large that is, I think that's worth talking about. I think if, and I think if the state continues to give you an incentive to match some of that money, you know, if we add some money around, that that's another good reason to do it. So that's kind of my thinking about it.
And we'll realize the saving even if it's not holding down rates.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And just make sure I understand, what you're being discussed is broadly financial reserve. It's not, until we actually put it in a first side account, it would just be a financial reserve to be used for any purpose until there was an opportunity to pay off or invest in first bonds or something like that.
So, yeah, we we would want to, if if we were to move the way I'm suggesting where we would essentially tax all funds in the district, it would essentially need to be used for first in some way, shape, or form in the future. Whether you send money in to buy down your side account or whether you just say, next year, two million dollars of that reserve is going to pay, you know, the first two million dollars out the doors towards that as a way to buy down your rates yourself. Those are a couple of options to do that, but we would need to designate that portion of our reserve in that way. Otherwise, it 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 would, it has to be taxed on all funds and then used for the benefit of all funds to go back. So you could create it, have to be taxed on all funds, and then said, I'm gonna target this four million dollars to this one thing. It would have to, it would have to benefit all funds.
Just like designated, great dollars or something. Once you once you add, put it aside for that purpose, it can only be used for that purpose. Doesn't have to be used right now, but it has to be used.
Right, and that's exactly what we're doing with the payback of the existing pension bonds. You know, we're taxing all the other funds a certain amount so we can cover the debt service every year. That's what's going to happen, so it'd be similar to that. But it would create a reserve that again, even if rates were, let's say they were lower and you wanted it to go even lower, you can use it for that. You could always buy that rate down in terms of. You could always buy that rate down in terms of a longer time. So the benefit would be there, which benefits it.
But we missed the window for this year.
Correct.
So when you and I had a conversation about this, we had talked about it going in as a way to build back up that extra 5%. Is that the same thing that you're talking about now?
It could be a portion of it.
Just a portion?
Wouldn't need to be all of it, be a portion of it. Just a way to get those reserves to start coming back in.
So sometimes
Wouldn't be the only way.
Sometimes like a 1% tax across the system, right, can actually be an effective 1% budget cut.
Right.
How do you, and that, to me, is a function of where it comes into budget planning process, right? If it comes at the outset and people know it, then they build it into the budget.
Right.
It's less of a cut and more of a plan for thing. And I just wanted to point that out because I've worked with municipalities where they do these 1%, 2%. And if they come at the end and it's like everybody sets things up and then it don't happen.
That would not be ideal. In fact, the, the, part of the appeal to this in the 21, 23 by any would be that we can plan it, and if rates are actually going down, we can say, maybe you just hold the same. We'll buy the difference, right, in terms of buying a rate down in the future. Does that make sense? So that way, it's, it's a really low bar for people to get over.
So do we address that policy-wise, or is it just a procedure?
I think Superintendent, I'll bring you up a proposal, what we plan to do as part of a budget package. And again, that would be this year, it would be next spring if you hear about it. And we'll know our rates next October, so that'll be instructed. And we'll know if there is a gap, like I'm thinking there will be.
So I was just going to say, I love that idea. I just, from a conservative, fiscal, responsible board member, I just love that kind of idea of playing it safe. So.
Well, and in the back of my mind is, if it's, if the court case isn't settled, they're saying rates will go immediately back up. And so if we've spent it on something else, here we are again, seeing ourselves upside down. So, yeah. So I agree with them.
Thank you for that leadership.
You bet.
I'm just wondering, reading in the paper and reading the clips that we get through OSBA, there's still some talk out there, I don't know if you're talking with your peers, or if Dawn heard, you know, at Cozo. But if, if our state's general fund does not have the amount of money, because the student success act was not a constant, it was just something that was put aside, there's nothing that says, kind of like the CTE money that the state has to put back. You've already told these districts what they get from this. But if they are short on the general fund, then they don't have it to give. There's nothing that makes them legally have to come up with the shortfall. So it would just be in the best interest, because they promised this money out there, but it's not. Have you at all?
Well, that's the trick. The interesting trick will be this idea that we're in the second year of a by any. So all the money needs to be spent by that June 30th. So you kind of have to gear up really quick in the coming year to spend that money. I mean, we can ask, there's a carry-up provision, but it's only until the following September. So the trick of this is, gear up, spend it all. It's tough to, this is going to be a bumpy year for that, in my opinion, this first year. I think it'll get better in future years, but this first year is going to be ramp up really fast, spend the dollars. So you get them out the door by June, and then we'll be already having a conversation about the next by any, where you'll have a little more flexibility with those dollars, because you can move money within the by any.
So I have a follow-up question to that, Peggy. It's about sustainability.
Right.
I mean, that's my concern about this whole
Yep.
You know, Student Success Act, it's like, it's just like everything with our state. You know, if the economy's up here, then great, you know? But if the economy sinks, or goes to general fund, and the economy sinks, the taxing come from, you know, the students.
Would go down.
More.
Yeah.
So.
Chicken today, feathers tomorrow.
I think the other thing you need to worry about is where we're at. Is our current, current service level. And so everybody thinks we have fixed
Oh, I know.
pre-K-12 education. We have not.
Yeah.
So when it comes time in the, later down the road to figure out what is going to be our, just our cost of living increase, our roll-up cost increase, that they're going to shortfall us on the current service level. And they can do that.
Yep. I think that'll be a heck of a battle, I think the idea will be, hey, K-12, you got years, you got, we got other ways to spend money.
And also, they haven't totally devised the mechanism to get the money in the door. They don't have the personnel to get the money in the door.
Yeah.
On a related point, do you think there's any news about the kicker kicking?
Well, it's definitely kicking for this by any.
Yeah.
Okay, but taking out, as we modulate between the two.
The forecast was last week, and I didn't attend that. Was it, was it bumping up more?
I don't know if it's bumping up more, but it was definitely, I mean, states, yet the state has never been bringing in more money. But it's just, it's already, it's already, don't doubt it.
Money is committed.
So it'll kick this year.
Yeah, but this, this by any, right, we're saying.
Yeah.
So either take a ballot measure or the legislature totally, so, and that's not going to get half, that in the short session, so.
There's some first work on OSBA. So 2021, overall, there will be a net investment. I mean, there will be more supports for our kids in our schools. That's, that's going to be the net effect. How we get there, how clearly we talk about that, will be the challenge for us in the coming, next several weeks. I mean, we need to have this in front of you in March, which means we've got to be done here in a couple of weeks anyway. And we can't really build SA, in my opinion, without looking at what we're doing. So we'll need those tweaks made in the next couple of weeks and really get the ball rolling. And jumped into my next slide on reserves already. Basically, I, I think creating a first reserve is a thoughtful way to go on about it. We can also deal with, you know, we could create in the next year, if, if, if things are looking good and we get a little bit of luck coming our way, and we have some dollars, we can talk about transferring that for the next, the next year reserves. Again, we'd be modest about that as well, and careful about how we do that. But that's another opportunity. Other than that, I think we can look larger plan in the coming years tied to a by any. So we can get a better picture of where we're at. Does that make sense?
Always makes sense.
Good, good, good. That's easy enough. So my next steps are, we're going to finalize the staffing allocation model, reductions that need to be made. We meet with that committee this week. Student investment account uses, we're going to finish that up this month as well. And we'll finalize our budgeting during March of 2020, so that Jessica can be able to put that document together. And again, we need to develop that clear communication. And so before the mid-delay, they appropriate that budget, propose to the committee, and then back to you for adoption in June. Makes sense? Up to speed?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
So probably move the second is that we approve the consent agenda. Although, is there any to it? Although, if they were to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So there. Okay. I bet you were all wondering how well you did your mid-year, your, did your board evaluation. You guys were great.
Yeah, right. Yeah, sure. Didn't lie, so I don't know why.
We did this super.
Really? There was my thought, you guys kicked this down the road. We have a hard time just getting the superintendent one done and some comments, so. No, no, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting to it, I'm sorry. No, you did your, everybody did the super job.
Yeah, you texted.
But I went back and looked at kind of our mid-year, and we are required to do a yearly evaluation on us, the board, and the superintendent. And I went back and looked, and we, we don't, we don't, some do really good in-depth, and others put your number and write no comments. And I'm thinking, what, what have we evaluated? What have we, we're, what have we evaluated? So kind of like how, I thought this would be like a midterm time for us to touch base, because what I find out as the board chair, when I'm calling around to folks on different things, some of us know information, some of us don't. But this, I thought, would just be a good time. And if it doesn't work, and if it's not, we'll go back to with numbers and categories. So what I would like to do is spend this time together here, just evaluating where, where we are and where we, where we think we need to go, and what kinds of supports and what kinds of things we, we need for one another. So I thought it would be just kind of an evaluation of where we are, where we're, where we, where we need to go. So just like, the very first thing I want to check in with you guys on is the committee structure. If we think the committee structure is working?
I do. I think maybe more so than in past years, these committees seem engaged, productive. And, you know, it's mid-year, so it's, we're only halfway through the work, but things are getting done and reported on. And I think I know all of what's going on in everybody's committees, because they've either reported it or it's been, or updates at the end.
But I think, you know, I'll, I'll own this. You know, a really good point was here tonight, is that those of us that were on the by any knew exactly what was going on with the middle school. And I had the staff send something out, but just because something was sent out doesn't mean everybody was know. That middle school information should have been in your board.
Yeah.
It should have been your board.
Like you, I, let me just push back a little bit. You gave us the opportunity to talk about it here, and we were able to ask questions about it and get brought up to speed. So yes, maybe it should have been in there and we could have reread it. But you also gave us a platform to ask and talk and discuss, and that is as important as, as having it to reread. So don't be so hard on me.
Well, no, I'm just, but, no, I'm just, again, you can't correct something that you don't address in, in you. Another, another point was, I had a committee met, and it wasn't that they had taken direct action, it was more that inactivity made an action. And that was that we had missed the
The first one.
Did, on the first. So Anne and Eric took upon themselves to share that information with all of us, so that we were aware of it. So that would have been, you know, something that, and it wasn't because they took an action on it, it was because there was no inaction. We missed the deadline. So, so it was, it was just, I thought that was great that they were proactive in making sure that all of the board, you know, knew about that. So the other way that we get a lot of our information with committee is through Dawn's updates. That is something that goes to all of us, and it's up to us to read it. But we don't usually discuss a lot of those things that are on that, on, on that update. Because it's not, you know, our, our business meetings are very formally, they're very, very, you know, this, this is what it is. So we may talk about it to each other one-on-one, or it might be something that comes up in a committee meeting. But a lot of the things is just, it's just a, a pass-through of, of information. So whether we need, so then it, then it came up, which I wasn't even knowing it was going to come up, that do we need to have more task force, or do we, and the thing is, I know none of us need another meeting. None of us need another meeting on anything. But, but where, what format do we have if, if, if it's not discussed at a public board meeting? We can't do public business outside of the public board meeting? We have, committee meetings are noticed, and, you know, and we have committee meetings. So how do, how do we, how do we go in-depth with, with work? How do, how do we get things where it's not just once a year, it's on our radar screen, and then, and then it goes away? And that's what I was hoping to get to with setting up the committees a little bit differently. Is that board members, at least three at a time, could go in-depth and then share, share it out. So we're running parallel so that we're not just coming to a board meeting, hearing from staff, and we didn't have enough time to think about it, or digest it, or task force.
But, well, I'm, I'm very focused, I apologize. But I think at the beginning of the year or in the summer, the board, you as the chair, pulled us together and said, these are going to be our priorities for this year. And that's what you structured committees around. Not knowing that this was going to, maybe that becomes a committee structure next year, or, but to add another committee for that, I don't think so. It's really not our work, it's really their work. We can guide it, but it really is their leadership that has to guide it. They, I think, I'm clear there was a message tonight that we're not satisfied with the results. And we just want to know that they're as passionate, and I think they are, as we are. So, but if that rises to the occasion, in my mind, next year for a committee, then formulate a committee around it. That's when you do task forces. I think it's a little hard to throw that in the middle of the year.
I will just say on that, as far as reporting requirements previously, those did come out of committee work in the past. And I
The actual reports.
Yes.
What's on the report?
That just
Yeah.
What's on the report? And I would hope that it would stay within that. Historically, task forces have been much bigger, closer to the curriculum evaluation committees and things like that. Could take
Well, I guess I would like more of an opportunity to talk about things. I mean, I, you know, depending on, you know, when issues come up, for example, that another committee is dealing with. I know we get a report out, but we don't necessarily always have a discussion about it.
Do we necessarily?
I don't know, but I'm just saying, just to have an opportunity, and I'm not sure who determines all that. But we don't really, we're, we're unable to, you know, talk to each other behind closed doors. We're talking about things that are going to become before here, here. So, I know. So, but the only opportunity we have is in a public forum. And so I guess I'd like to have a little bit more thought. Maybe the, the committee itself would, would determine, you know, how do you take a pulse, perhaps, of the board to see if they really want to talk about in the public forum? I'm not entirely sure how that would look like, or what that would look like, or how that would work. Or if you just bring up a topic, and we either not talk about it, because nobody wants to talk about it, because it's not that important to them, or we have an avenue in which to talk about it. Because I like to get people's ideas. And one of the challenges of being on the board is the inability to hear other people's opinions in real time about issues that matter. It's only, you know, people make determinations as to what comes before us, oftentimes it's staff-driven. And we don't really have an opportunity to bring things ourselves, potentially that might come out of a committee.
To Dawn's point, I appreciate it, you know, I think I was sweating at home on the other end of the telephone when this was happening. But you had, at the work session, an opportunity for the committee to report back about their work. And that seemed about like the right amount of time between different, between the group of work the committees are getting done, so that we're not constantly bringing things in front of the board. But at the work sessions, we have an opportunity to talk about that, so that it's not just reports from the administrators, but it's also reports from several board members. And I like that. And I think, the only thing that's kind of at the top of my mind is like, so we start out the year with a set of priorities and a set of committees, then things kind of happen midstream. Is there an opportunity to reevaluate where there's capacity on the existing committees to do more work? And to kind of
Ask it during the
Yeah. I, I have no, like, anything has a slot in a particular place, that's not where it's coming from here, but
But things have changed all the time. I mean, just the kind of things that came up at our board meeting, there's no way we were sitting there in August. That, so those were the kind of things that I kept jotting down, that I would like to, you know, when you look at the categories that you do the evaluation on, socio-political, I was looking, okay, what, what kind of work are we doing that falls into these categories, that we don't have time to, to just talk about?
Right.
So, so we have met, we, we met with the THPRD board to, to schedule one of those things. Takes months, months in advance to do that. So we have a meeting set up with our students are going to come and have dinner with us again before the end of the year. But even getting that scheduled, everything, nothing just happens overnight. So I need to know if we are doing too much of something, not enough of something, that you're not getting the support. Are we on track? Do we need, so, so we know that we're tracking, we've got reports on the middle school schedule, we've gotten reports on our finances, we've got big things that are going to be going on with our, with our budget. What kind of information? What kind of information are we going to need? We start meeting with our budget committee. We don't even know exactly how much money we're going to have to, you know. We're in the middle of doing the student success, and we get updates every, every month. And we've got board members that are sitting on that. Now we're getting ready for the next phase of it. And how much do you want to be involved with that? So I just thought this would be a time, mid-year, not, not talked about at the end of the year, we should have, we, you know, did we, could we do you as a board because of the things that, we could always get more training, but it's, you know, when do we get all of us together? Because anytime we get us all together, it has to be public notice.
All right. Kiki, I have a couple of comments. One, I think Dawn's communication to us really does help with things, but then we all might have questions, and I don't, the thing is, your point about like, well, I'm going to individually ask that question, so it's a format, you know, maybe five people are asking the same question, you know, so I don't know that. And it kind of goes back to that conversation we've been having about the emails that we're getting from the community. And because of how they're coming to us, it, we, it seems to be, one, we lose track of what the, even the conversation is, because you can't respond to the email, you have to copy and paste that email to somewhere else. So you lose track of things. And then there's no, just talking about communications. If it's like to the whole board, I don't know what the answer is for any of those, so, I mean, and some of those like pertain, we might be getting questions the same way, and we're not getting like any looped into any of that to see, okay, oh, that makes sense, you know, so we're not getting looped in, there's no reply all, there's nothing to kind of keep that. So, okay, I've had that question, I can take this and use it from someone that's asking it individually. So that is a place, but I do have to say that it'd be nice if we could have, because there, you know, I can't think of one specifically right now, but I'm sure that there's something that Dawn has let us know in his, you know, email that, okay, that should be a question I should write down for, you know, because we're all going to be asking the same question.
And sort of picking back on what Susan's saying, I think also too, there's an opportunity when we have community comments at the board meetings. Oftentimes, I have no idea how we responded, and perhaps then later, somebody might, might say something. I don't know what our position is on anything really. So, I mean, I have a general idea, and I can, you know, guess, and then I think it ends up putting more work on staff, because in essence, we might get the same question later on. Then we have to shoot it to staff, who then has to respond. They might have already responded, but we have no clue. So it would be really nice to know when people come with these big issues. It might just be a question of when you're responding, you can blind copy us or something. So then we can see what was said, I mean, who's, what, what you responded to. So then we can always know what's going on. I just pull out the time, I can't talk to anyone about it, and I don't get any feedback of what's going on, so everything is always new to me when I get it.
Well, I mean, it's like case in point, I had a teacher from a middle school, you know, you know, reach out to me to talk about, you know, all the schedules. Well, I had, you know, at that point, seeing if he was scheduling, to go, oh yeah, I totally get this, and I can talk to you, I didn't even know what he wanted to talk about. So it's not having necessarily, and I got it, right, but having the information out there to really have a good conversation with that's something we should really get earlier than we got it.
Because I feel like I'm putting a lot of pressure on staff oftentimes, because I have to ask them, I have to ask them questions about details that maybe was already shared, and then maybe I'm asking the wrong person even. Somebody else has dealt with it, and there's really no way of knowing.
Let me ask her real quick, we had two task force chairs. When you responded to when folks came for public testimony, did you copy the rest of the word?
If I could, if I could add, I think also, sometimes it's just, you can't solve the problem.
Yeah, we know that.
Thank you for, thank you for coming, and, you know, if it's something that you needed passed on to staff, people would pass it on to staff. Usually I think they're coming, I think what they're doing, they're expecting to hear from the board, and most instances, not. And then sometimes they don't even know that it's not board. It's, it's not board.
Well, if it's just something like, you know, this is how we responded to a whole group of people, and we know, we're just getting the same
I have a memory of doing that.
Yeah, that's what I mean, did that. But you basically said, you know, this is how in general. Well, no, I mean, it's just like, I mean, instead of creating more work, so it's kind of more work to send every little thing, but you could say, this in general is what we said to another people. And I know Anna's done that, and I usually, when I'm sending something up that I want someone to respond to, I always say, could you please CC me on it, so I knew what was said.
And I would like to not be held for my memories, because I remember very
Yeah. But I mean, you know, but just something like that, we're not asking for something major, it's just that we have a general idea that's going on.
Dawn, you know what I would follow up on that one? Just in terms of process? Well, we have, and it, we have nothing to do with us, that we have no control over what's happening, because is it district issue? So to circle back to find out, you know, because it is a big issue that we still, still maybe continue to, you know, bear about. Circle back and say, here's the steps it's being taken to, to resolve. Because, and that's really a communication from the district, because we still may be getting, you know, emails about it. So it'd be nice to go, okay, here's, I have no say in how it's being processed, but at least getting some kind of circle back.
And we know where to direct them to, too.
Most, most of the time, unless they're asking specific, if it is like something that we're not dealing with, like when we were hearing for the Rachel Carson you know, we're, we're not dealing with that. Staff usually works with, you know, and most of the time, Eric and I are dividing up, and it is, you know, thank you for, for your
I feel like the volume is way different too, actually.
Yeah.
There's more, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
People try, I mean, you, there was a lot for you.
No, I, I feel like the volume is really skyrocketing.
This superintendent's report actually has had threads in the past, which were basically follow-up from things that we saw. Like I think, I've seen Dawn take out specific issues. So maybe it's just a matter of being sensitive to what those are, and continuing to current
And then the other thing is, we don't, we don't put the answer in the body of the email, it's also another, for the thing you have to write, and then it's an attachment. An attachment to the email. So then the other thing, and this is a good question that maybe we can
Is that a system that's fixable?
Yeah, I mean, who did it?
The new, the new format now is, and I think we tried talking about this at the convention, is I can't tell, we think we get an email, we think it's just to us, and we don't know it's gone to everybody. And according to our school board handbook, and when it goes to everybody, the chair needs the answer to get a response. And, but then you can't, you can't respond back, then you have to take that email and put it in another email.
Is that a new communications thing, or a program, or?
So as part of our, our new website, Ann, we removed all staff emails, all personal staff emails from the website. Privacy and leak conditions and phishing, that kind of thing. So what we did when we created the new website, is there are a couple of different ways for them to contact you. If they know our conventions, they would contact you with their own email. We made a school board button, and that line goes to all of you, but they don't have a choice, it's a school board email. But then, where you have your individualized sections on the website, we made four contact forms for each.
Kara, it's not working.
Oh, I think it is.
It works.
I mean, it works. You just have to look up at the time, and it says to all students.
No, no, I did that, but I don't like the format.
So the, the challenge with that is you don't know where the person is e-vailing.
No, no, that's, that's our, because, no, because our, no, we're which schools, which schools are e-vailing.
Because our protocols are, if I get something from Beverly High School, I will forward it over to Tom, and I'll say, Tom, is it okay if I respond to this? It might be directed to me or whatever. Or, Tom, do you want to hand-handle it? And so I don't know unless they happen to put something in the body of their email, which school they're coming from. And so then I don't know what to do, unless I have to contact the person to figure out which school they're coming from.
How did you know that before, when they would just email you with an email address?
Right, that's a much better way of doing it.
Because how did you, how did you get that information? Because you still wouldn't know unless it was
Well, no, no, that's a different No, wait a minute. So my concern is more of, you know, we can't respond to the email that we're
So it was, it was easier before, to put, it was easier before, if they sent it to all of us, to reply all, everybody got to see that I responded to it.
And since there's a, with those bucket emails, if I'm getting them wrong, we can still put bucket emails on there. So if we have our school board, we could still put that on the website, correct?
Yes, we could create a group and use that group address.
But can you do individuals too?
We have our group address.
I'm sitting right under the
So, I can tell those, when it says school board, I know it's going to all of you. When it comes to just my name or others, I don't have any idea until someone, one of you says something to me. Like, I just ask somebody if they got the one we got today.
But that's always been an issue.
Yeah, it has.
A couple of options, to your point about not being able to respond, if we did the bucket email and removed all of the forms, right? Then they would just have to contact all of you if they wanted to contact you. One of the benefits for the end user from our community on the forums is they get a notification that that email has been received. And, and there's some backend work that goes into that, which they wouldn't get if they just
So I would think, give an example of, like, one of my schools has had a lot of issues, and I've had a lot of emails. So now all of a sudden, instead of me having a trail of those emails, we're coming in this, you know, un, whatever, I mean,
Do not reply to?
Yeah, do not reply. So it's harder to even keep a trail of those, and then I have to, and if I need to forward it to someone at the district, you know, it's harder, and then they don't have like the history of the reply. And then some of those emails have been very pertinent, so I have to go back and forward like five emails instead of having the history. And I have had some schools this year that have been like that, and gotten communication.
So the forums were removed for us this year, there are, there are very good uses for them. It sounds like you're saying that, that you do not like them.
Right.
And so we can look at other ways, so maybe some people can contact you that
Maybe I'm the only one that's dealing with that.
You probably are.
I, I I mean, it's not as big of a deal for other people.
Can we put like an additional filter perhaps on the front page that says, you know, contact this board member for these schools? And you can go into that portal, potentially for the form? So for the forms in the front page.
See, I think, I think, I think, Dawn, I think most of the ones, I don't even think people follow that they just contact us because it's, we represent that school. I think most of the ones we're seeing now is people want an individual, that they don't want to speak to the school board, they're going to to individually, and, and, but there is no way, when you, once you click it on, you can't see the email again. So you're, you're having to go back and forth to, to respond. Because once you click on that link in the middle, it just puts you on a whole new page, and you can't, or does
Let us have to do some research about what's optimal, what's possible.
Yeah, I think
Might be a creating issue, huh? I mean, there's always
So I think you guys have been clear about, kind of the main points. And so what we could do is sit down with community involvement, and I think together, and try and create a process then that sounds like it would, it would be easier for you to, to track your individual emails from schools, and then also make sure that emails between the groups are happening in a way that people know.
And I also wanted to use this time, at the same time, you and I talked about this before, but I put it on my list here, is Ann is the only one, that her contact information is the school district address. All the rest of us have our, have our personal addresses and, and personal cell phones. So if it's, if it's on our website, yes, it is. So
You just, you just didn't know I was
No, I get it on our website, like
No, 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 I meant, you're, I meant, when you go to our website
Okay, find us at our homes, is what you're saying.
Yes, when you go to our, you're looking for
That's fine.
Okay, that's, I just, I want to get, I want to get
I don't have all one.
Yeah, I want to get, because Steve has suggested, Steve has suggested that would probably be best if, if we don't.
Don't have our personal
Yeah, there's some privacy.
Yeah, I would just Which, which, which personal information, just because I don't know that everybody agreed to.
Okay. You go to our profile page right now, and you will find our picture, the schools that we represent, and then it has our home address and a phone number. It could be your own phone number, it could be your cell phone. The only one that does not do that is Ann. Ann uses the, so Steve has suggested that it would probably, it might be good, and I've never had a chance to ask you, so this was on my list here, do you want, Steve will apply with whatever, do you want your personal information on, on the website?
Do you think it's best?
So, you know, you are elected, so there should be a way for people to be able to contact you. Ann has this address here, but her cell phone number.
Right. And I have brought this, I mean, I will just say, the phone numbers I have in the past asked board members about, I also have opinions about that, but everybody wanted their phone numbers on.
Well, I just use my home number anyway, so no one can send you a text.
And all of them.
All of them.
No, I know that, I know that, I know that. No, nobody did anything wrong, this was what we, this, Ann asked us, this is what we all did. But now in this day of
Issuing
Yes. I will just tell board members, the reason I put my change, took off my home address was not because I was a privacy freak, but because I received a certified letter that I had to go to the post office to get for my school board work, and that hit the living room. I'm not paid enough to go do that.
So you can pick any number of reasons why or why not. But we've never had an avenue to ask, so this is, this is my avenue of checking in to see. We're just finding people are being much more, want, direct, you know, contact. So it's totally up to you, there's no rule. If, if, I didn't know the, I didn't know the rule worrying that we had to have some kind of personal for, as a public official.
You shouldn't have a way for people to contact you. You can decide what it is. But if you're elected, I mean, you are a public official.
Email is, you know, at a minimum, and will be there no matter what. Because I don't know any city council person that most, most public electeds have a staffer.
And a staff phone.
Just saying, it is different.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm going to do, folks, is we put it out there. I'm not going to make you tell for everybody here what you want or don't want. But you need to follow up either with
With the
staff or team staff, to let them know whether you want, whether you're
I'm looking it up right now.
Whether you want your home phone, your cell phone, your home address, all of the above, whatever. So that's, that was the other thing that you wanted to
Becky, I have a question for you. Do we have any issues midstream here that we think we wanted to put enough to the committees in addition to
Well
And that's not
That's what she's asking.
Yeah. And that, one was definitely this, these rubrics and this numbers, I mean, it, we, we can't wait and start that, start that for the staff here next August, so.
So maybe as far as a format, maybe at one of our work sessions like this one, we just take 20 minutes or so to do an evaluation, you know, with sticky notes or whatever it is, you know, what are, what are, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses? And they will fall into all those buckets, like, my say, and areas of improvement and how we want to proceed, and just do it together collectively as a group.
It takes a lot of time, research, and it's very disruptive to staff to switch these, is what I would say. So I do believe it is committee work. I do believe it shouldn't be frequently reported on to the board, and I believe it takes a year at minimum to do well. Just based on past experience, it can take more than a year. Even getting to the format we have now, I think, took two. And it is
And it's gone through a lot of reiterations over the last
And the value of tracking metrics of any sort is being able to track change over time. And so changing them is actually very costly. So I would deal with extreme caution, deleting or making minor changes. So if there are new things that you wanted to add, I would put a lot of time into that and be very thoughtful about them. I would look for best practices all around. Beaverton is a leader on this already. You will be challenged to find new things, and you will want to partner closely with staff in making those changes. And it will take much longer than until April to get it done.
And
In my opinion.
Kind of question like with Dawn, what can I be, some of the overlays, I mean, I can almost see the data and then doing manual overlays of key things possibly in some schools or if you have a map to train, maybe you say, oh yeah, it's gonna happen or and that, that's valuable out here and the winter maps off, and maybe something might be already done there.
What is it, two or four, count five or something like that?
Yeah.
At least can we go in and do that?
That's not gonna do it.
That's not true. We have to remember like invested how many kids get...
So, so I want to manage the expectations here.
So we're talking about one thing, can we move to another? I thought we were talking about three sixty and now Anne's going into the data that we're editing.
I thought you were doing that.
Okay.
No, no, I, I want to manage the expectations that we laid out to the staff here, a whole bunch of new things that we wanted on our report. And we didn't get great consensus, just different people wanted different, different things. So do we expect to see those changes in the first report come next September? I don't know what, I don't know what we, do we expect that we put together a new form in the first school that comes to us to make a report that these changes are on there?
I just think we should think about it conceptually. What do we conceptually want to see? I have an idea about that. And then staff can let us know how they can meet it. And they could provide us with an idea of when, when they can meet it. Now, I think about these things as, you know, being urgent and the suggestions I was making, I thought, or maybe I was wrong, wouldn't require too much more effort because the information is there already. So they don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's a question of additives more than creating something new. So what I was looking at was, um, let me find my notes now. Um... Just putting them in a pile over here. Here we go. So number one, I know in the document that Jenny was so nice to provide us with, she provided just a general idea of the different programs. And when she was talking, she said that she talked about over time how this Abbott started in here and Flex started here and blah, blah, blah. So to me, it doesn't seem like it would be a stretch to put on a Word document just a listing of all the different programs by year of when they were introduced. And maybe some were even taken away, introduced and took away, because it's taken away. Along with, you know, when, when we approved in our budget to add additional counselors to the elementary school, for example.
Yeah, sure. So I mean, when we're talking about return on investment and we're looking at budgets, we do that, I mean, that's what we hear all the time. And so like, I mean, that's one of our charges that we ask the school district to do for us is, okay, what's the return on investment on Abbott? We started it, you know...
That's not my question. That's not what I'm saying. About the return on investment.
Well, it kind of is though, because it's like, if you look at those programs, right, so you're looking at, you know, and I know you're looking at it from like students and, you know, impact on...
Well, I was trying to figure out what year they started. I don't remember what year all these programs started. And I'm trying to find, I'm asking for something simple, which is just a list of the programs. That's okay, that's why, no, 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 I'm not asking for them to do any additional evaluation. All I was saying was, I wanted a list of the different programs, like Abbott, Flex, whatever it is. When, when the English language arts thing was implemented, when we got our success coaches at the elementary school levels, when we added additional counselors, what year, school year were those things implemented? That's all I wanted, a name of the program and the year it started. Because I wanted to then look at that and juxtapose the data over that and do my own sort of evaluation. I wasn't asking them for anything. I was just curious because I don't believe I get that level of detail from them. When they're providing these reports to us, they give us the whole like su- super high... But I'd like to look at certain schools, for example, and see, you know, like Ekinemun, for example, you know, when things are going great at, for one particular program, what programs district-wide were in place at that time? I'm just curious, because I think that to me is important to know.
And those are the dark tails within Ekinemun ROI, because I think actually we could do our whole board analysis and it is in the back of budget materials that we did.
All right, well, I have, I just not seen it.
How much they put in?
So what other data do we want to come back with that we will have the, what other, because we, we, there were a couple of things that were coming out there, not just...
Yeah, then another thing I was interested in was, but I know we get these school reports every month, right? But when we're getting all this data, it would be nice to see another column that just has the, just how many years the principal was there. We even have to have the principal's name. Just how many years the leader was there in that school. I think it's... No, no, no. No, individual school on this, on this data sheet, yeah, okay. Like here, this data sheet, there's nothing here that says the leadership, how many years they were at that school, the school.
The total district and they could change schools, it should have been nine years, maybe five or four, it's breaking down.
I thought it said something at the top, how many years.
You're talking about two different things.
No, no, this report, the one...
It's knowable.
Yeah.
Is knowable, but I don't know, I have to go to each school. I just want it to be easy to go and put it on here, like, and see it with the report.
Actually, I think, you part were gonna say what I think is interesting, looking at the data, and I know that over the years, you know, I can tell, look at the big picture versus the schools. There are some schools there that, you know, I, the top elementary school there that is doing amazing is a little...
Right, right.
You know, and so just looking at that and then looking like, I mean, these at farms and how their numbers are, I mean, that to me is like, okay, you've got two very low income schools, you know, and...
But that leads us in really well.
Right, and that's the kind of stuff, I mean, I don't need another granular, I mean, but it is kind of like very telling right there, you look at... So that's kind of what you're thinking about in terms of, I mean, looking at these schools and the disparity between two very, um, you know, high need schools. I mean, that is a question I have.
Well, and it's just a question, I think, of the district, looking at where all the successes are and trying to spread them out. And I don't see that happening.
Well, I think we don't hear about it, is what I think.
Well, I don't know, I just don't, we don't get any information on that. I just don't see that, that happening around the district.
I think one of the struggles for us, I'll just say, even in the short time I've been here, we've given you data, some intense data, and then we've heard that you don't want that. That just give us the big picture. So like I said, I, I think we can give you as much data as you want if you can tell us what data you want.
You know, it's kind of interesting there because when I first got on the board, so going back in time quite a bit, we were pretty, you know, we were told not to look at it school by school. We were told to look at the big picture of what we're doing. Don't ask these individual questions about schools. But I mean, I do have questions about why some of our schools are doing amazing and why some of our schools are struggling so much. So I mean, I mean, honestly, we, we were told that, Dawn, so...
Yeah, and it does...
So you remember that?
If they do, I... And I've never bought into that as...
My interest is in...
Yeah, but that's...
Okay, 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 let's talk to, let's, everybody, so everybody can hear, okay?
My interest is in doing like a deeper dive on social emotional learning and some of the stats for our students of color. But I think that may be, to Anne's point, a longer term process, and I don't know if that's something we would want to start mid-year to have completed mid-year the next year, or if it's better to start at the beginning of the school year so that the deliverables come out at the end of the school year. That's a question. Because I think to really do that correctly, and I also take Anne's point about not removing other things so that we can keep tracking, but I think to really do that well so that we're tracking right things for our students of color and that we're looking at social emotional learning, that's gonna have to be a big partnership with staff and it's gonna probably take some time. And I would question with the capacity where we're at with the student success act and middle school schedules and everything else, that this is probably not the right time for that.
Tom, I would also say that the socio, um, the social emotional learning aspect, I mean, I know it's being worked on in schools, but they're just starting that. I mean, in a lot of ways, like, you know, with, you know, the, the student surveys to see, you know, where they're at in terms of their mental health.
Sure.
And the same thing with, you know, younger ages, and we're almost, not that I'm saying that you can't measure it, but that is a really hard thing to measure, students.
But that's why the partnership with staff in the long term.
And we will have to come up with metrics to report to ODE, so I think that's coming.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I just want to go back to what Anne said. I really cautioned us in adding more. We have a lot of data. I think it's great to ask individual questions and we can get some of those specifics for where you want, but to... I don't know that we want to be in a, in overhaul of what we're asking and getting. We're getting what has been important to us.
And, and I guess I, to ask things to say, and one is, um, you know, I am still stupefied at some of the data that we saw today and some of the action plans that weren't being reported that we're beginning to see movement after what I now consider six and a half years of my time on the school board. I just find that... Okay, I didn't know, it's good to take that walk. But, but oh my gosh, what if we hadn't started the conversation also? So, you know, we kind of need to keep our foot on the floor on some of this. I'm also here on our school board page right now, thanks to Susan's wifi, thank you. Um, and surprised to see that our planned strategic measure review was for next year.
I miss that.
And, and like Tom, though, I think, uh, watching board work over the years, uh, you know, we're headlong into negotiations and budget such season and trying to get people graduated and starting a big new project right now would be challenging at best.
I'm very passionate about those priorities, and yet I think now is absolutely not the right time. That's what I'm trying to say. So two completely...
But it should be a commensurate next year.
I know it is. I know it is.
Wait, one question though, because like every meeting, I got a little Tom, every meeting goes, how many room players you have? Can't we just have that be published by the...
That's a good point.
Yeah, about the data there, I mean, like, we had thirty-one last year additionally, at least, I mean, we're already asking every meeting.
But when do we think that's telling us? I mean, like, there's a reason I don't ask it. Like, I, I think it's a symptom of something else that's going on that isn't necessarily symptomatic that I'm planning to improve as a system.
But it's not necessarily a problem.
Kids are in trauma too. I mean, you don't want to forget that. Well, I can, I have kids, like, just talk about the kids in foster care that we just heard about today.
Yeah, that's, it's like, um...
But we're not... I mean, do you know, I mean, like, the question is how to make sure we identify. Well, I think there's been to be...
And room class is limited in how many, I mean, there's, there's things about that.
You always ask about the student success coach, but where's the, I mean, how do you measure something, it's like a soft sell by them?
Right, right.
That doesn't have anything tangible, if we take away, it would no...
You might, you might be able to tell if your school has a lot of room players, what impact that has on everyone's great thing, scoring.
Yeah.
I mean, so I'd like to see that, for example. That would be good to see.
Okay, so again, we, we keep throwing stuff out and we confusing the staff.
We decided next year.
Yeah, we'll...
So we either, we either decide, these reports are gonna stay the same for the rest of this year. We give this to one of our committees to take on the beginning of next year. That means we're probably not gonna have anything change through next year. And again, this, this is what I wanted this mid, I, I know, to state the, to state the obvious. First of all, we're, from now till the end of the year, we will probably have executive committee either before or after every board meeting.
Okay.
So, so you can plan accordingly to that. We know we're gonna meet with the students um at the March meeting, so we'll, we'll put that into the schedule as well. Um, do you want, before the end of this year, and I know the end of this year, it goes just like that, especially when you have spring break in there and, and all those other things, do you want to try to organize to meet with another entity before the end of this year?
The elections be over before I can meet with anybody else that would be elected official.
Okay, so Anne, you know, have any?
I, I would love to meet with county commissioners.
Oh, okay, but they're not...
They have the election too, you know.
No, but I'm just... I don't know if you could, I'm just talking about...
There's your county commissioners coming on, so we would have to wait till after the election.
Well, I, just, just so you know, I, I've met with one of the county commissioners to plant the seed, to see if they would be open to that. And the seed that I planted is to share with them that most other counties provide some little help supports. And just wanted to see if that was even a, a discussion that they start to be, very, very, very open to that. So, um, but again, it, I would need to, to find a meeting that they could meet with us between now and then because again, know that we're gonna start teaching on budget responsibilities and budget meetings. Um, so I, I, I don't want to assume that you guys have all this free time in the evening.
Well, if it can be like school board, if it's possible, that would be great.
Or whatever, your summer meeting. We're gonna have an evening one or summer, like this session, they could come in the morning as a beginning of it or the middle of it or something.
Okay, so how many of you want me to try to get, get it done before the end of this year? Two.
I'll support you.
How many of you want it for the summer meeting?
I mean...
Summer.
I do, I mean, we're actually flexible.
And if they say no and they can't do it.
Okay, we'll see. The other thing is, is uh, we have not had a meeting this year, and I plan on doing this, of bringing in someone from the outside to talk to us about diversity and equity is included. Would you like to see that, uh, if, if we do it, again, take into account, we would need to invest some, some time to do that?
Yes.
Where does, how can McCurry add on his equity audit? Because that might also be something we want to put in at the same time.
I think that training is really important for us, for a lot of reasons, both for the knowledge and then for the modeling.
So are you willing to do a longer meeting at info session, or do you want it added to your... I'm just trying to get an idea of what...
I don't care.
Doesn't matter.
One of those two.
Okay.
One thing I would request, we had great training at the, from ODE, right?
Right.
I felt like I was left hanging because we didn't say what's next or how can we change our practice. I would love to have something at the end. I know we need to be trained, don't get me wrong, but I would love to have some sort of ongoing action, even if it meant on our placards, there was our equity statements or something at every board meeting. I, I don't even know what it is, but I would love a...
Okay, so...
To take it a step further during...
Okay, so do we want it to be an, an outside person because there might be a fee or something? Or do you, do you want that handled internally, like?
Um, since it's David Zlannick, I want to, I mean, there, I would...
Did we give this to the planning committee to decide?
Yeah. Oh, look at you.
More than happy to take that on.
Okay, so I would also, and you talk to Gary Pat, and I would talk to David Zlannick too, because David had some really good people that I don't think charged them coming to his community conversation.
That doesn't preclude that.
We can do it internally, you know?
Okay.
So we're gonna, for looking for the ongoing project.
We're gonna aim for April at our work session, okay?
Perfect.
Um, and, um... Oh, the last thing I want to take up with you folks is we got suggested to us, um, in our public of our room setup that they didn't feel welcome, that they didn't feel...
Can we just move to a bigger place? I mean, if we're gonna have that many people...
It's getting close.
Where would you go, you're like...
Across the street.
One of our suggestions was to let you know when we set this up is I believe the board used to be set up like this and you could have, you could have staff on this side that would give a lot more room for audience.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Say that again.
You don't, you don't need as much room in the middle to test your...
Staff could be on the side and then you could have a lot more room for audience. I guess that's the way it used to be, just go for my...
Honestly, the thing that, and if there's no judgment in this, it's just a fact. Staff and the tables take up a lot of...
Yes.
So if you're gonna really tackle this problem and stay here, you have to figure that out. There's probably a lot of solutions to it, but that is the fact. And other, if you want to not deal with that, then Merlot's across the street and there's a very big space.
We used to rotate between buildings too, right? Where we go...
That was a very long time ago.
I know it was before we were on board. Were you...
You're a high schooler.
Yeah, that was before, I mean...
Not that...
What's old is new again, always. Isn't that the theme of this year?
But, but I also, I also know that staff can tackle this and I support whatever choice they're making. I know it's...
I just, you had an effort. Have, just have any feeling so, we know, coming up for the rest of this year, folks, it's, it's, it's February, March, we have spring break, we have student success act, we have a budget, uh, we have...
Honestly, we're gonna have those boundaries. We need to be across the street for some of that.
We are going to take up four boundaries. The other thing I just want, if there's any chance, again, I, I know it's always about time and, um, Small Matters, the documentary that was shown last week, I wish every single board member could see it. It is so well done. And...
Can we see it streaming?
No, no, it's a product. It's about early education.
Oh, honey.
And it's even like babies to early, I mean, just from the thing... And it's even like babies to early, I mean, just from the things, and it is just so well done, but it's a, it's a product. I mean, you have to pay your license and everything.
Too bad.
So. So if, if not, I was gonna, you know, again, I know that we don't have a lot of extra time and it's hard to get everybody together, uh, but.
How long is it, Becky?
It is like close to two hours, I think.
That's a big commitment.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I can't just show it to them and, you know, and, you know, it's a, it's a long, that's why they had a big, you know, big auditorium and a big, you know.
How many people were there?
I would, is anybody, Ken was already left. I, I, I'd say about forty, fifty maybe, it was hard. But then when I take away the staff that were there and, um, but it was great. There were, there were all sorts of people that asked a lot of good questions. And what was really great is Karen Twain from the Children's Institute, used to be Tiger Twollet, was in the audience when he asked them to questions and she, she knows this, I mean, she's just, so it was, it was great to have her. So, anyway. All right, well, thank you for my experiment. Uh, I don't know if we will do this again. Uh, but it was a great way to touch base and rather than having individual conversations that we could hear from one another. And you guys did not disappoint because it shows what a passion and engaged and various opinions that we do not all speak with one voice, um, and I wouldn't have it any other way because that's how we represent and, and do. Um, but I, I thank you for indulging me this way and, uh, it might be a lot easier if you just put your meat, not meat, next somewhere else. So, anyway, thanks.
I think it's a really good, oh my god, Becky.
So, anyway, um, that's my, any other, any other? Good? All right. With that, we are adjourned. Our next scheduled business meeting will be Monday, March 9th, here at the central inventory office, and so with that, we are.